Hi, how are you?
I'm good. I don't know.
Good morning.
Good evening.
The interview, okay, thank you.
Yes, it's awesome.
Oh brilliant, thank you. I have a lot of thoughts about what to do here. We actually had a, we have a company there supposed to be providing us, um, what would you call that, a report about the best way to configure what we have now and solve our problems, but also be more energy.
No, I don't know where my, my phone's in my bag and I could use this.
Well, mine has notes on it, you don't want mine.
No, it's fine. I couldn't find one.
I'm sorry. Um, yeah, you don't want mine.
Cable, we're all set, we're all set?
Yep.
Okay, we're gonna open the meeting, it's about six oh one. This meeting is being audio and video recorded, it's on cable on channel nine, it'll be repeated this week, and it's gonna be uploaded to YouTube. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention the passing of several town residents since our last meeting. Jeffrey Goncalves, Joseph Domenico, and Walter Jones, and in their memory, I would ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I would first like to congratulate all those graduates that graduated from Dayton, Lee Holworth, BP, and Bristol Aggie, congratulations. We were able to go to a couple of the graduations, and I think the future is in good hands. So we're gonna interview all the candidates for the Governance Committee. I'm gonna ask that everybody be sequestered except for the first candidate. But before we do that, are we going, does the Board wanna pick the people tonight, or do we want to continue this, is my understanding someone can't make it tonight and possibly can make it next week? Are they still interested in the committee?
I'm willing to interview one more time, as long as it's not a whole bunch of people.
Sure, it's not a whole bunch of people, somebody's on the list that just can't make it tonight.
That's fine.
We can vote next, next meeting, next week.
So we're gonna, all Board members will ask the candidates a question. Dr. Seers, you're first on the list. After your interview, if you wish to stay, you can stay after the interview, but in the meantime, I'm gonna ask that everybody leave the room so you don't know if the questions are asked, you already can formulate the answers. By right, you have every right to stay at this meeting, it's a public hearing, but I would prefer that we interview each candidate individually and without the other candidates being present, so. So Dr. Seers, you're gonna-
And I think-
Usually we've left it up to, like, we kinda asked everyone in the beginning, right? If they were okay with having the other people present.
Well, like we did for school committee, we asked them to step out, and they did. And my thought is, if we do have another interview, we have different questions for that individual.
That's a good idea.
So that's fair.
Yep. So will the candidates please leave, with the exception of Dr. Seers?
Sir.
And we invite you to come to the podium.
Sir, Doctor Sir.
Doctor Sir? Why do I call you Doctor Seers all the time?
Just call me Doc.
So I'll ask the first question. How are we doing tonight?
Okay.
So we know that we don't have that much time to spend on each candidate because we have a hearing at seven thirty. So the Board of Selectmen have formed this committee to look at possible changes to the town government. What experience will you bring to this committee that would convince us that you are receptive to change if needed?
Well, I have spent most of my professional career doing administrative work, aside from being a physician and treating patients, but I run, run and managed and developed several hospitals, chief among them. I was superintendent at Medfield State for a year, I was superintendent at Taunton for two years, I developed four private psychiatric hospitals, and I've run my own private practice. I'm primarily interested in the development of systems to get things done, so my administrative skills at the hospital, I think, are, might be the most pertinent here. The other thing I've learned as a psychiatrist, I read people pretty well, and I can manage to get things reasonably well done, providing they make sense.
Thank you. Who wants to go up?
Do you want to tell him what the, we picked three items so that he's aware?
I thought we had made everybody aware.
Well, it would be nice to just reiterate, so the Board of Selectmen had asked me to develop a list of things that I thought that this committee could explore. They settled on three topics, and two of those go hand in hand together. The first is to examine renaming the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and the other two are relative to the treasure collector positions. They are currently two separately elected positions, so question number one, should that be one position? And question number two, should it be appointed? Those were the three that they, you don't have to answer and divulge any of your thoughts now, it's just that's what they have established as, as your charge. That's what you're getting into, essentially.
But I have strong feelings about things, as you may know.
I do too.
Do you have any questions about those particular topics? Not, not, we don't want you to express your opinion, 'cause you're gonna do that when you meet, if you're appointed with the committee, but just, any questions about the direction that this committee may be going?
It would seem to me that it would be very important for the Selectmen to be able to appoint those particular people who are incredibly important to them getting their positions fulfilled. Electing some people is probably the way to go with many things, but may not be the way to go with certain others, because you end up screwing up the works by, look at what we have for a president.
Probably don't wanna get into that.
I know you don't wanna get into that, but look.
I appreciate your thoughts on that.
I just wanted to know why you wanted to serve.
Why?
You wanted to serve on this committee.
Well, more than, more than forty-nine years ago, my wife, my daughter and I moved into the town. We took over an old family home, and we've been in there since. I liked the town, I liked its pastoral quality, its farm-like quality, and I am particularly impressed with the progressive nature that has shown up in the past few years. I was not impressed with it ten years ago. I think it was a backwater ten years ago, and really recidivistic, but I see some real life there, whether it's the new Selectmen, or the new people coming in, and I would like to be a part of supporting that progressive movement for the town, rather than the old "good enough, it fits" kind of thing. And I don't know how effective I would be, but you'll know from, 'cause I'll let you know.
It's good to be straightforward.
Well, thank you.
I just wanna say, in the years that I've known you, you have always shown a great deal of interest, care, and concern about this town, and I think the last time I saw you was when they had that presentation at the community church about the Mount Hope Mill.
Yes.
And the comments he made, because of the knowledge he has of that mill, also showed the interest and concern you have about the town, so I really appreciate your stepping up.
Well, he, he was my grandfather-in-law, he was my wife's grandfather, and the, the whole family was very important, and my wife's mother, Ruth, Ruth Senior, I call her, you know, grew up there, and she had a fondness for the place, but she always felt that she needed to get else, get out from under. I think she was feeling under J.K.'s tutelage, and J.K. was a really tough guy to deal with, and you have this portrait in the house, and you can see it, and he still has an effect.
I'm also glad, just a general comment, that we have such a wide age range in people who are interested in what's going on in town, just by the number of people in the, as I say, the age, the generations represented, so I think that's great.
I actually have a question, if that's okay to ask, but it relates to that, but I'll defer to the Board if you want me to ask a question or not.
You can ask the question, just have a time line.
Yeah, ask question.
My question is, judging by those that are interested, I know basically the position of many of them, just from living, not living, but being in the town. I do think that people will have strong opinions, like you had said, and I think there's a reason they're interested in this type of committee, and we're getting the response that we are. And are you prepared to work with, in a productive, professional manager, manner, with people who may not see or share your strong opinions, and in fact have strong opinions in the opposite?
As long as that person is reasonable and can talk and think and chew gum at the same time, I'm perfectly willing to work with them, but if it's some entrenched right-winger who is gonna tell me that the earth is flat and it's, it's a matter of discussion, no, I'm not gonna deal with that idiocy. I don't have, I don't have enough time in my life to deal with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay.
It's refreshing, a little bit.
You can stay if you want, or you-
I think I'd better go back and see my daughter. I haven't fed her yet.
If you would ask Dean Cronin to come in next, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good seeing you again.
Good seeing you all.
Welcome.
No drum roll?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as you probably know, that we formed this Governance Committee to deal with three issues. One of them is possibility of changing the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board, and the other is combining the treasurer and collector's position possibly, and establishing the treasurer-collector position as appointed and not elected. So those are the three items that we've charged the Governance Committee. So my question, I'll ask the first question. The Board of Selectmen has formed this committee to look at possible changes to town government. What experience will you bring to this committee that would convince us that you are receptive to change if needed?
Well, I think I gained a little experience in the six years I was here. Probably my, my strength would be knowing where to go for the answers, you know, to most of the questions that you have, and streamline, excuse me, and streamline in the, the whole process. I mean, I can't say, those three are, are, I wouldn't say long-term, you know, investments in, in a committee, so I mean, that can be streamlined, very short time, just making the right calls to the right places.
Well, we, we didn't wanna have too many items that the Board would consider, so we chose these three, and they may, in the, in the future, we may be asking the Board if they wish to remain on the Board.
Well, that's good, 'cause I wasn't looking for a full-time job.
So, someone else have a question?
I think, I mean, I know, I've worked with you, so I know your experience with town government, and I know you have the knowledge, and I know you have the background, and I know you know how to do the homework, and I think you're right, this initial assignment, which we discussed the night you and Mr. Perry were here, is not intended to be long-term. This one is an intro, let's handle this one, let's get some recommendations, let's figure out what to do, and I think you're right, as far as, if the recommendation is to make the changes, the process to make the changes is probably gonna take longer, meaning legislature, than the actual work of the committee. So I don't really have a question, as I say, because I know your background. I'm just glad we have the range of people, age-wise, that are willing to step up, to show interest in the town, and the fact that you've served, you're not now, "I'm done, I'm retired," I'm, it's like, you know, so I'm glad that we have people who, and I, when I look at some of these, have served in other capacities on committees, so, just a comment, really, not a question.
Just to follow up on, on, a couple of your comments, there is so much change going on throughout the state, and it's been over the last couple of years. It wasn't so much while I was sitting on that side of the room, but, but I started looking at some of the Secretary of State reports. This, this state is really, as far as government, they don't know which way they're going. You've got three hundred and fifty-one communities in the state, and right now, there's only thirty-nine cities in the whole state, thirty-nine cities. When I went to high school, a long time ago, and we were doing social studies, it was, one of the stipulations to be a city was you had to have over fifty thousand people. Well, out of the thirty-nine cities today, this is as of yesterday, only four percent have over fifty thousand people. That's it. So the existing criteria to be a town or a city is not population anymore, it's the form of government that you're using. You either go to city government or open town meeting government, it's the only two choices you have, and right now, there's fifteen, fifteen towns that have applied to the state to be a city. I mean, like Bridgewater, Franklin, I said, what is going on here? So I'm curious to get some of my own answers, what, you know, what direction is, is this gonna take us, you know? Everybody wants to go to a city form of government, 'cause it's eight, nine, ten city councilors and, and a mayor, even the small towns, so it's, it's very interesting. It's one of the reasons I wanted to get into it.
I hope that's not one of the things we're gonna be asking to become a city.
No, no, I'm just saying, it's, 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 even the Cape, there's, I think, five towns in the course of a year.
I know when I, I grew up in Swansea, and I've, I've got my fiftieth reunion coming up when I graduated from high school, so it's, it's been a while also, but when I was there, they were talking about within ten years Swansea would be a, a city, and I couldn't figure it out, and this is fifty years later, it's not a city, and it shouldn't be a city, we still have the former government that we have, so hopefully we're not going down that road, so.
No, I hope not.
Well, he answered my question, 'cause that was, my question was, why did you wanna serve on it, so, thank you.
I'm curious.
Do you have a question?
I do have a question. My question is that, judging by the names on the list, there's a lot of varied personalities and viewpoints, how, and I feel kinda foolish, 'cause I know you were a Selectman, so you've been in this, of working with others who oppose your views, you know, can you maintain a professional decorum and, and work with the other side, even when their viewpoints might be strong and emphatically in opposition to your own?
Well, it wasn't always professionally, but, they do us wrong both ways some nights, so.
Well, that means you're passionate, right?
I don't have a problem.
And honest.
I've been a person-to-person people my whole life, you know, from the first job I had, to, you know, fourteen years old, working in the diner in Albert, you know, to being a schoolteacher, to being a, a Selectman, anything I've done, I've been face-to-face with people, I can adjust, you know, whether, I like it or not, I can adjust and fool the best of them, you know, my true feelings, but-
Don't give out your secrets.
No, no. But I, I don't have any problem with that, you know, I can, I can adjust, I can work with anybody.
Thank you.
And I'm not bragging, it's just the way I am.
Okay, brag.
So we're seeking some change possibly, but it's not change for the sake of change, I'm, I have to, if I, if somebody wants to change something, I have to look at it and decide that it's worth changing. I don't, I don't automatically say, okay, it's a new idea, so let's go with it, so.
Right, right.
We want people to be open-minded about it, we want people to look at it, I feel strongly that we should become, and I know you were a Selectman, but that we become a, a Select Board, I feel strongly about that, so I would hope that that's something the committee seriously considers. But you guys are gonna look at it, you guys are gonna, I say guys, meaning ladies and gentlemen.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Is it, is there going to be like a, a representative of the Board, like an ad hoc member, or, or anything? You know, who do we, who do we respond to?
So actually, I, once these appointments are made, I'd like to sit down and meet with the committee and talk a little bit more about it. I envision, I don't know if you'll be reacting this quickly, but maybe a quarterly update, either through the Board coming, through the committee coming to the Board of Selectmen, or just through myself. I'd also like to be able to, in your position, you know who everybody is, but be able to provide that resource of where do you go for a certain answer, and who you need to talk to. I do expect that the committee, so for the treasure collector, I do expect that the committee meets with the treasure collector, and sits down and sees what she has to say about it, and what her thoughts are, and, and does a little homework in a sense of why it would be beneficial or not to do it, what she needs to do her job and things like that. So I would be a point person, definitely, as I always am, and I, we would probably set it up with a regular scheduled, scheduled meeting for the group to provide updates with the Board, and then if you do finish quickly, we have plenty of other projects for you to work on.
As far as the three articles, three subject matter that you mentioned, Ken, I can see, I already have a list of ten, twelve phone numbers and, and boards that I'm gonna ask, 'cause that's exactly what they've done, just with those three, so I mean, I'm gonna have a good answer within the first two days.
Yeah.
You know, for us to run with and discuss and go over, so, you know, the best thing is to go right to the horse's mouth, why'd you do it, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna add that I think that that's a really good idea, and maybe not even just, obviously, our treasurer and collector, of course, you know, they should seek feedback from Mrs. Hathaway, but also like surrounding communities, as you're mentioning, talk to boards that have adopted the Select Board title for their executive board, talk to communities, other collectors and treasurers in other communities, not just Dayton, just to get a feel, like, if people have made those changes, if we know communities that have went from an appointed, for example, to an elected or vice versa, it might be good to reach out to them, but also to get the feedback from, of course, ours as well, so, yeah, I think that's good.
I mean, I, I had, had made a couple of phone calls, a couple of Cape towns, and right away, "Let's set up an appointment, come and talk to the Selectmen." "Oh, no, I'm not going on the chicken banquet." "No, I just have a couple of questions, and, you know, I wanna know the procedure you use, and when you did it, how, how did you have to proceed?" You know, because there's different ways you have to proceed. This town doesn't have a charter, so we don't have to do what a lot of the other do, so that eliminates a lot of red tape, too, so. There's some things that don't require ballot vote, so this is what I have to, you know, I wanna find out, you know, how they did it.
When this came up on the agenda, I made the motion that we set up a committee of citizens to study it, purposely leaving the Board of Selectmen out of it, and you can always send a message to us through Mallory saying, "This is something, if she can't answer it and it comes to this Board, that's fine, but we don't wanna influence the committee in whatever they're doing." So that's why I suggested that.
No, I understand, yep.
Okay, could you have Martina Grover come in, please? Thank you.
Thanks, Dean.
Thank you.
I don't think she's here, is she?
I didn't see her, but-
They don't know who she is, I, they don't know, so.
Oh, if she's not here, we go to the next one, is that here?
No, she's not here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If Jen's available.
Yeah, I'd like to keep going, 'cause we're running a little bit late here.
Mrs. Brady, we may wanna reschedule with Mrs. Grover, because if she's not interested in being on the committee, then we already have the seven people.
Well, they, they nearly, yeah, they nearly can't make it tonight, so we're probably seeing the rest.
Okay, perfect. Hello, hello, how are you?
So, is Jen not here?
No, there's a few people not.
Dean, and people all-
Yes, they were all notified, yes.
Hi.
Thank you for coming in.
Are you Megan?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I probably should've said that. Sorry about that.
So as you know, we've set up three items that we want this Governance Committee to look at. One of them is rename, possibly renaming the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, combining the treasurer and collector's position, and establishing the treasurer-collector position as appointed and not elected, so those are the three charters, at the moment anyway, that we're looking at, so we'll all be asking the questions, and my question is, the Board of Selectmen has formed this committee to look at possible changes to town government. What experience will you bring to this committee that would convince us that you are receptive to change if needed?
Oh, boy. I mean, experience-wise, I don't really, my only thing I can say is that I, I am very invested in this town, we just bought our second house, we're moving on Friday.
So you have two houses?
Right now, we're in two, two houses. So I plan on staying here forever, and this town, we moved here for the schools, we moved here 'cause we heard wonderful things, and I wanna keep that going. I don't per se like where things are right now, but I, I do, I work well with others, I do always take in everybody's perspective, and a lot of the times, I don't wanna say my mind gets changed, but I am open to, I may come into it feeling one way, but I, you know, I can leave feeling an entirely different way. I just, I really wanna, I wanna make good in this town, and I, I wanna see it thrive, and I wanna see good things come, so, that's all I can give you.
That was a bit handsome. This is Gulab.
I noticed in your application, you have managerial experience.
Yes.
Work-related.
Yes.
So how do you feel as far as, well, these issues really are managerial, 'cause it's structure of government.
Yep.
And is there anything about any of that, I'll call it assignment, the three topics that you have any questions about? Now, we don't want you to express your opinion one way or the other, 'cause that's what you're gonna do with the committee. Who will remain nameless.
I, I wouldn't say I have any questions.
Mrs. Ehrenstein will be the contact person, because in response to a question we just had, we purposely wanna keep the Board of Selectmen back, we can be resources, but they will be, if we are, it will be through contact with Mrs. Ehrenstein, because we don't wanna influence, we really want the citizens that get appointed to take a look at this and say, what do we think is best for the town of Dayton? Okay, so if you don't have any questions, that's, that's fine.
No, I've been looking, sorry, I, I was looking up at what the tasks are now, I have a few that I would love to add on, but as of right now, I just, I can give my input on everything, and we'll see, you know, if I can pack it out, of course.
If we do add on, it's after completion of the three items that we're giving you, and people have to decide whether they wanna stay on the committee.
Yeah.
Or let somebody else do it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, Mrs. Feeny, why did you wanna be on this committee in particular, and maybe not like another committee with a vacancy?
Um-
Do you just have a passion for, like, the general direction the town's going, and just try and gauge your interests?
I grew up, my dad was on school committee, finance committee, superintendent, did a million things for my town, so I grew up watching that, and I always said, I wanted to do something, but I didn't have, you know, the background to be a school committee member, I didn't have the background to be on the Board, so when I heard there was a new committee with kind of a whole new, I don't know if other towns do this, but it's, you know, so I thought this would be my kinda chance to get my feet wet, and then if something comes up later on down the road, then I'll look into it, but I think this is a good jump-off point for, I think, a lot of people that may have never been on any type of committee, but still wanna be able to, you know, I really wanna see good, that's, that's my biggest thing, there's some changes that need happening, and these may not be massive, but it's, it's a start.
No, I'm really glad you applied, and I think it's always good to have new people, but I did just wanna say, for, for things like elected, you know, positions- but I did just wanna say, um, for, for things like elected, you know, positions, and even appointed positions, I think it's always good to have a variety of backgrounds. So I wouldn't say if I were you that you're not qualified.
Well, I just, I, I remember hearing somebody at the meeting a few weeks ago saying, you know, somebody in government background would be good. I unfortunately don't have that, but I do have the, the want to do it.
Also good, to not have that as well.
I agree.
Good.
So there may be somebody on the committee that has government experience, but there's gonna be other people clearly who don't have government experience. So I, I agree with Brett, and I believe Nancy's thinking the same way. We want a variety of ideas out there. We've come up with these as things to look at.
Mm-hmm.
They may or may not go forward. I have strong feelings on some of them, so.
As well.
So.
This whole group does.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, we're keeping government out of it, per se, because we're not gonna participate.
Well, that's the thing I think I like about this.
We're saying to people in this town, are you willing to step up and serve? And tell us, look at these, these three items, tell us what you think the town should do, the direction it should go, or, or whatever. And I will just say, you said you didn't, you didn't do school committee 'cause you didn't think you were qualified. In all honesty, for any of, for the most part, any of those positions, whether they're elected or appointed, all you need to have is the willingness to work and learn. That's what you need. And as, as Dr. Zee said, or any other committees, we got a list. And anyone, anyone who wants to start doing something, any of those committees is a good place to start. As I say, willing to work and learn and contribute whatever they can, so.
And I just wanted to add to your point, to both of your points, excuse me. Um, when I started, I was fortunate enough, uh, to be appointed to the zoning board, um, and I was serving with, um, Selectman Pacheco, Chairman Pacheco, who was, you know, I'm looking at his years of service, and I knew nothing.
I'm older than Brett, just so. Make that clear. I'm twice his age, by the way.
So, you know, it can be a little intimidating, I totally understand, but I learned so much, even in that short period of time, from my colleagues. And I, I like to think, maybe they learned a little thing, a couple things from me, because I brought a new, maybe I was asking questions that, um, didn't get asked before, so.
And that's why I love this idea, because it's, I think a lot of people are intimidated to join these big committees, because they see what goes on, and it's like, if I've never done it.
So, you're fitting the mold of what I actually envisioned for this. Um, I thought fresh eyes, someone who's not used to the way it is. Um, new perspective, there's same landscapes, it's just new eyes. And I would also urge you and anyone feeling like you, do not judge your beginning on someone else's middle, at all. Um, we all started somewhere.
Yep.
Um, you sort of already answered my question, which is great. Um, it was about working with other people who would quite emphatically have viewpoints in opposition to your own, and how you would go about handling that in a professional manner, and still be productive, um, and, and contribute in some way. So you've really kinda hit on the head by looking at the other perspective, uh, and, and seeing that. So I'll just, if there's anything else you'd like to add, um, but you basically answered my question.
I'll just add, as of town meeting night, there was a vacancy on the finance committee, that's where I started.
Oh, boy.
I had no experience in town government, day to day. I worked in government, but not, not, not in this kind of a setting. But that has opened up also.
Well, we're certainly gonna put you to work somewhere. I'm willing.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Who's next on the list?
Um, it's actually Lori, Lori DiMello.
She's not, yeah.
Ms. Quinn was looking to go early, and I know that Mr. Neely is, um, also unable to attend, would you like?
Leo, why don't we have Leah Quinn come in, please?
Is, how about Dan, is he here? Do you know Dan? Dan Wilken?
I know him.
I don't know him yet.
But I don't know.
No, I don't know.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I didn't hear he's not coming, so. Nice to see you, Mrs. Quinn.
You as well.
I know, Mrs. Quinn, you might be a little nervous speaking in public.
Oh, yeah.
Because you have no experience.
None at all.
So, all jokes aside, um, we have three items that we want this governance committee to look at. One of them is renaming the, uh, Board of Selectmen as Select Board, combining the treasurer and collector's position, as well as establish, establishing the treasurer and collector's position as appointed and not elected. So those are the three items, right now anyway, that we want the Board, uh, committee to look at. So we're all gonna be asking you questions, and my question is, the Board of Selectmen has formed this committee to look at possible changes, changes to town government. What experience would you bring to the committee that would convince us that you are receptive to change if needed?
I think change as needed is the most important part, if you wanna progress correctly in any government office. I think that there are quite a few issues in this town that definitely need to come to the forefront. And I think you need to be thoughtful and take the time to really establish what direction you wanna go in as a team, within the committee or a board.
Yes, so we, these are the items that, um, we would like the committee to start at. Once they're completed, we may be asking the committee to look at other items, and the, all the committee may actually come back to us and say, hey, look, we'd like to look at, go in this direction. And we'd ask the board members, uh, if they still wanted to remain on the committee, obviously. They may wanna just deal with these three items and move on to, uh, another board or something else, so. Uh, that's, that's a possibility, but these will be the three items that we'll be, uh, looking at, uh, the first time. Um, Mrs. Ehrenstein will be kind of the point person for the committee.
Okay.
So she'll, uh, most likely be at the first committee meeting, give some guidance. And the Board of Selectmen is, Mrs. Gulat has told a lot of other members, other people interested, we won't be participating in it. You have a right to speak to any of us, if you have questions, but we're not gonna give you the direction. We, we're giving these, these three things to look at, and Mrs. Ehrenstein will, any questions, you will probably direct it to her.
Okay.
And we'll be asking for, uh, probably quarterly reports, so quarterly tells you how long the committee's gonna be in existence for a little while, if we're talking about quarterly, uh, reports. But that's something we'll probably be looking forward to, also getting some kind of feedback, is what's going on with the committee. So, uh, Mrs. Gulat, do you have any questions?
Um, in your work experience, um, 'cause I notice you've got quite a bit here, can you, the work experience and the qualifications you have, do you see that working, fitting in well with this committee as far as, uh, you know, the, the duties?
I do. Um, I'll just say, I've been self-employed for, this is my twenty-first year. Um, I have had employees, I am now just my own employee at this point. I have trained, assisted, guided, um, some of my apprentices, I'm a hairdresser. Um, as well as when I was starting out being self-employed, I was a paralegal, and I am also a noted Republican, worked for several real estate attorneys, litigation attorneys, and private firms. So I absolutely have dealt with municipalities, assessor's office, um, and delegateded in closing packages. So if you refinanced your home, I would come to your house and go through that paperwork with the borrower, um, just as a representative of the bank, and explain to them what exactly they were signing.
Dr. Zee, do you have any questions?
Sure, um, Mrs. Quinn, and I asked everyone this here, um, pretty much a version of this question. Um, you're pretty active in the town, you go to a lot of meetings, you go to the school district meetings. Um, so I guess my question for you is, why this committee, um, and not another committee with another vacancy?
I think that as a taxpayer of the town or city that you live in, it is your job to participate in where you see the direction. You know, there are a lot of hot topics, you know, these ones mentioned are hot topics in this town. My frustration, I guess, as to why I feel compelled to show up to so many meetings is because I wanna see progress. I want to see teams and boards and committees in this town working together towards the same goal. And, you know, I understand, it's gonna be an uphill battle, you're not gonna always agree with people. You're always going to have conflict of some kind. But I don't have a problem expressing how I feel in a way that some might not like, and I might not like. But you have to be able to, to say that in order to move to the next step. It's not always going to be, uh, rainbows and butterflies, you know, it's hard work. You know, is it time consuming? Yes. Does it take you away from your families? Yes. Does, could you not go to everything on the weekends, maybe, that you don't wanna do? Yes. But we're, we've put our family here, we've moved here, our roots are here. We need to be invested, and we need to come together as taxpayers to start pushing through some progress in policies in this town that have gotten lost, in my opinion.
That's sort of a, a really good lead up into my question, which is just, um, how you would go about working with others that may emphatically not share your viewpoint, and it would quite possibly be the complete opposite of your strong feelings and, you know, how you feel. How do you go about maintaining a respectful conversation and productive? Uh, I mean, we're kind of saying the same thing.
Right.
A, a level of productivity that this board's now existing.
It's part of.
Could you, we've asked all the candidates to, uh, step up.
It's part of any job you're going, going to, any relationship, I should say, not even job. I mean, your marriage, the relationship with your children, family, employees, bosses, you know, chairman of the boards that you're on. I mean, you're not always going to see eye to eye with everyone, you're not gonna see eye to eye with your spouse. I mean, that's part of life. Does it mean that you have to create this horrible, um, tense situation? No, you have to work it out, you have to work through it, you have to agree to disagree, and, and know that that's gonna be okay, and move forward. I mean, I think that this board is an example of that. Over the last four years that I've lived here, I've seen that. And they show up collectively, and they leave it at the door. So that is, you know, I've had employees, you have to leave it at the door. Everybody has things going on, you can't bring it with you. And when you don't see it the way that you wanna see it, you let it go. Tomorrow's a new day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, good, thanks, guys.
Jen is here, but I'm not sure if that Martina Grover's here, so we'll just see. So we'll keep them kind of in order as best we can.
Hello, hello.
Probably should be having everybody identify themselves for the public.
I know, we're like, yep, go ahead, sorry.
So we know so many of these people here, and we have, so what is your name, please?
My name is Jennifer Dzikowski.
Okay, so we, uh, we're all gonna ask some questions, and I've asked, you weren't here really, but I asked all the candidates that may be sequestered so that they don't prepare the answers to the questions that we're asking.
Sure.
So we formed this committee to look at three items. One of them is the possibility of changing the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. The second one is combining the treasurer and collector's position. And the third was establishing the treasurer collector's position as appointed and not elected. So my question is, uh, the Board of Selectmen has formed this committee to look at possible changes to town government. What experience will you bring to the committee that would convince us that you are receptive to change if needed?
Oh, good question. Um, so as far as receptive to change, um, in one of my former professional roles, um, I worked for the Girl Scouts of Eastern Massachusetts. It's, um, an organization, as you may know, that's well over a hundred years old. Um, and there's a lot of governance involved in that organization, because not only is it a nonprofit, but, um, we have, um, chapters that report into a national, um, organization. So, um, often, it was difficult for change to happen and slow, um, but the mechanisms around change were really important, um, that we follow all of those procedures, and really look at, um, things that may have been set down a hundred years ago may not really be relevant today. Um, so I think that's my feeling, is kind of looking at things objectively, um, and then making a decision. Does this apply to life today in Dayton?
Mrs. Gulat?
Um, and, and I'm looking at your volunteer form. Um, you have managerial experience in a number of areas. Uh, you've served on a number of committees as far as, you know, here in the town. So, because of all your qualifications and experience, probably more of a comment than a question, um, research, communication, uh, policy, uh, logistics, the whole bit. One of the things that we have said is, this, this board is not gonna be involved with this committee, hands-on, upfront. Uh, the committee will, if they have questions for us or need information, they'll work through Mrs. Ehrenstein. Most of the guidance for the committee's work will come from Mrs. Ehrenstein. Um, we, we really want this to be, uh, a study by residents. At residents, we wanna know how you feel about, we've got these three topics. And this is, that's why there'll be reports coming back to the board. Are you comfortable with that kind of a setup as far as?
Yeah, um, I think that's a, a setup that I'm very used to, um, in terms of kind of reporting between, um, either the Board of Directors in organizations that I've worked in, or, um, with the senior leadership team. Um, we'll have committees, um, and sort of meet and look at logistics and weigh things out, do the research, and then funnel that back through, uh, which makes a lot of sense, because it takes a lot of time to do that, and that takes time off of your plates. Um, and then you can really get it at that finalized point, you know, instead of, um, having to do all of that legwork that's involved with it. Um, and we can hopefully do some listening to other members of the town and things like that, and, um, you know, with Mrs. Ehrenstein's guidance on that, um, I think that would be a really great way to move forward with these three topics.
Thank you.
I just wanted to know, I mean, I did ask the other candidates this. You are very present in the town, um, you attend a lot of different meetings, um, for different boards and, and committees. So why are you interested in serving on this particular committee? Or is it another one?
Yeah, sure, so actually, I think, um, the topics, uh, that are being covered by the committee at this time were very interesting to me. Um, I think it's, uh, very progressive that our, um, town has decided to take a look at these things, um, and it's nice to see that Dayton is staying ahead of things. And I think, you know, I'm very proud of our town, um, you know, we've done a lot of great things, um, and one of them being that we're staying current. Um, and taking a look at these things really helps us to stay current, so.
Town administrator.
Uh, my question is, and you sort of, your background, uh, will help you do this, but, um, you will be working with others that will, might, most likely not see eye to eye with your viewpoints, and your viewpoints may be strong, um, and that you'll be dealing with people that have just as strong viewpoints in complete contradiction to your own. How do you maintain professionalism and productivity in an environment like that?
Yeah, so, um, I think consensus building is a really difficult task, no matter where you're doing it. But one of the most difficult places to do it is with children. Um, and I have a long background in youth work, and specifically with the Girl Scouts, um, in teaching them how to come to consensus and to do it in a civil manner. Um, and that's really one of the things that we're working on with them all the time. Um, this past weekend, we had a wonderful, um, campout, and every decision on that campout was by committee. So, um, all of the girls had to decide, and some of them are third graders, some of them are fourth graders, so there's some politics there. So it's, it is interesting, um, but I think that the most important thing that is, it's not personal, it's not about people. Um, I mean, it is about people, it's about our town, but collectively, um, and how we wanna move forward together. So it's not about one personality, one person in particular. And I think it's important to kind of keep us focused. Um, you know, some of the things that I would employ is having an agenda, making sure that we're staying on the agenda. Um, you know, if we're taking sort of side roads off of the topic, bringing us back to the topic, making sure we're taking really good notes, and hearing people, giving everybody equal time. Sometimes we just need to air whatever it is that we're thinking, and then we might get back to where we are. Um, but if people feel like they don't have the time to express what they need to, then they might feel stifled, so.
So we'll be asking for quarterly reports, so it kinda gives you an idea how long the committee's gonna, gonna exist. Uh, and it was pointed out that we won't be involved, but the, our town administrator will be involved. These are the three items that we're looking at right now. Once they're completed, we may ask this committee to look at some other items that are important in the town. And we'll ask the members if they wanna stay on the committee, number one, 'cause they maybe just look at these items here.
Sure.
So, as a possibility, we, we may be looking at other items, or you may be looking at other items. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I sort of would love to know timeline in terms of when your hopes. I sort of would love to know timeline in terms of when your hopes are for this to get started and you did mention quarterly, so thank you for mentioning that, what your ultimate goal is in terms of turnaround for this.
Mrs. Aronstein is going to meet with the seven members once they're appointed to give direction on it. What we did tell one of the candidates in response to information that was provided to us is, it may take longer, so, so let's assume that the recommendations come into the board and we agree with them and now there has to be some kind of, whether it's a town meeting vote and legislative action. It may take longer to actually implement it simply because, but let's assume that a town meeting vote is needed and we get through all that, then the next step is it goes to the legislature. Well, we all know, they have a calendar. So it is possible that these three topics are covered and that moves on and it's now out of the bailiwick of local authority. There may be an opportunity to say to the committee, we got a couple more, are you interested? And yet, we're still waiting for that. So it's hard to set a timeline, but I think Mrs. Aronstein will give you, and the other thing too is, it may not be a definite timeline, but as you work through it, some things may come faster than others and...
That's right.
You know, the timeline may be fluid. What was expected to take out here, you know, we can bring it back here. We're ready to send something to the Board of Selectmen, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Also, thanks to you and the Girl Scouts. You guys did a great job.
They were so proud of themselves afterwards. So thank you so much for making that happen. They were on cloud nine and now all the rest of the girls who couldn't make it that night are like, when can we have an opportunity?
Fall 2019. No, I'm just kidding.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to do one more sweep, I guess, to see if anybody else is...
Yes, and then possibly the seven, actually the 7:10 maybe, so it's early. Right. Who's? Okay.
So we're missing Martina and Dave Neely. Laurie, Laurie DeMello.
I have some surgery today.
Oh, really? We may, all right, so we may have to reschedule.
Right.
So we got this one, this one, this one.
Let me just get your paperwork.
Sure.
Welcome.
I think we've been jumping around here and...
That's okay, no problem.
Your name is, you're Dan...
Yes.
So you know that we've, we've asked that, we formed this committee and we've addressed three items that we would like the committee to look at. First one is possibly changing the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board. The second one is combining the Treasurer and Collector's Position. And the third one is establishing the Treasurer's Collector's Position as appointed and not elected. So those are three items, so three things that we want this committee to look at. At a later point, we may be asking the committee to look at something else once these three are completed. So my question, first question would be, the Board of Selectmen has formed this committee to look at possible changes to town government. What experience will you bring to the committee that would convince us that you are receptive to change if needed?
Sure. Well, thank you, everybody, from the town committee, I do appreciate it. My experience is, goes as far back as about 15 years. I've worked in higher education throughout Rhode Island as well as in Massachusetts. And currently, right now, I am within a university advancement platform, which basically oversees fundraising as well as corporate initiatives. Within this role, I also oversee various different restructuring, hiring initiatives, as well as planning, policies, and development. So what that means is, is setting the structure that's appropriate within the divisions, if you will, to ensure that they have the appropriate policies and guidelines, review processes, as well as voting measures to ensure that each area is appropriately dignified and well laid out for, you know, future employees as well as current employees as well.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mrs. Gulat?
And so obviously, you come from a structured environment and you're used to working with rules, regulations, and things that you really can't change, but you gotta, you gotta do the best you can within those rules and regs. So this, this committee, as Mr. Pacheco said, is, when we, when these topics came up, the Board of Selectmen, in effect, stepped back and said, let's ask citizens to do this. So you will not be dealing directly with us. Mrs. Aronstein will be the contact person. If you need information from the board, I have questions directly to the board, you would give them to her. We don't want to influence the committee on where they go. We really want this to be a, a response from the residents, what they feel is the best way to go. And the other thing that we had said was that the actual, if the recommendations come to the board, that would mean we need to take action, whether it's a town meeting vote or whatever. And it's a town meeting vote and it's a positive vote, some of this may have to go on to, for legislative action.
Sure.
So in the meantime, we may say to you, well, while we're waiting to find out what's going to happen, there are other things that we may be asking about, but within your experience and having worked within, is your, is your involvement with education and public education?
Higher education, so colleges. Private, mostly.
Okay. But it's higher education.
One, one, mostly private, one, public.
All right, so that's what I was referring to as far as...
Yes.
But anyhow, with that experience, do you see that as being beneficial with the knowledge and background to be able to contribute to this committee? Because I'll tell you, we have a very varied list of individuals who have applied. We have a, a all-inclusive age range and they're not all educators, they're not all government people, they're not, I mean, very, very interesting backgrounds. So how do you feel as far as working with that kind of diversity?
Diversity is a good thing, Nancy. To be quite honest with you, it's good to hear anybody who is part of this committee or the townspeople to hear their thoughts, whether they attended high school or they attended higher education or served in the military, it really doesn't matter. The, the case here that I'd like to make is that what needs to happen is that the person or persons need to basically sit down, hear collective thoughts, meet together, and put together some strategies and opinion pieces together in an effort to present it in an ordinary fashion.
We truly want this response to our request for this committee to be a response from the public. Because the other thing too is, if there is additional action that needs to be taken, this committee or selected members, however they choose to do it, will get up in a town meeting if they have to and explain. This is why we did thus and so, because they're going to have to convince, I mean, you convince the board, we need to take action, we can take action. But if the next step is a town meeting, then that's what's going to happen. So, so I thank you for volunteering.
Sure.
Dr. Z?
Yes, I just wanted to know, why did you want to be on this committee in particular and maybe not in other committees?
Yeah, so this is actually, I'm a six-year resident here of the town of Dayton, proud Daytonian. And to be honest with you, this struck home to me, this type of initiative, primarily because I feel I can contribute to this initiative with, you know, my various background experiences, organizational style, and also the help of bringing in different sorts of benchmarking and so forth as to what other towns are doing to help culminate a, basically a beneficial digest for you all in working with this committee to ensure that, you know, this is presented in such a way where, you know, it's going to help the town forward. So for me, to get back to what you were saying, essentially, it's, it's very beneficial to me because I feel like I'm going to do something very good for the town.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Aronstein?
You will potentially be serving on a committee with some folks that will likely have strong opposition to your viewpoints and you will have strong opposition to their viewpoints. How do you maintain a level of professionalism and productivity in that sort of environment?
Take it all in, digest it, take it with a grain of salt, think about it, process it, and provide concrete facts. That's the biggest thing. That's really what needs to happen. You know, I mean, unfortunately, you're not always going to get the answers or the response back from the townspeople that you necessarily want, but it is what it is and you just work through that process and provide them with basically, you know, the findings and everything of what's the outcomes of the committee. And that's basically how you go about doing it.
Do you have any questions for us?
Of course. Always question. Just actually a couple because I know our time is...
You want to know what the pay is, right?
Oh, please, thank you. Pay and benefits. For me anyways, I, I do understand the, basically the background of this committee. Will there be more concrete talking points as to the goals of the committee and so forth that will be eventually released? And if so, you know, how far in the future would the...
I want to let the town...
Sure, we'll take it away.
Thank you.
So once these appointments are made, which we believe will be this month, so if, it's not going to be tonight because we had some people who couldn't make it, so our next meeting, I expect them to make a decision. We'll get our letters out, you'll be sworn in, and then I would be in attendance of that first meeting to sort of, number one, offer you, offer myself as a resource and answer those kinds of questions. I think a lot of what I've been hearing tonight from the board, we share this same sort of outlook, that we don't want to rush the committee. We want you to, you know, really set aside some time to gather the information, to research and get what you need to know to make an informed decision and have the discussion at the table with these folks that have totally different viewpoints. I mean, we've got a healthy mix tonight, so it's really actually positive to see, it's really good. So we want everyone to have the opportunity to share those views and then you'd come to a collective decision. So putting a timeline on it, I'm very hesitant to do, which is why I like the quarterly reports, but, right, I mean, it's really how the committee feels. We want to see some movement, for sure. We don't want it to stall, but we will help you mesh with timelines so that you're not, if it does get to the legislature, they're not going into summer recess, right? We, you know, so we'll make sure we're on those.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Great. Excellent. And in terms of this committee, I mean, do we foresee this going on for a long period of time in terms of ongoing or is it like short-term?
Once you have these three, we, the Selectmen had asked me to compile, compile, you know, a long list of things. They didn't choose all of them, which was wise, I think. We don't want to overwhelm anybody. So the first three are intros, I guess, so we'll see how that goes. And then if you want to stay on the committee, we'll probably have that conversation and then submit some other items that you would like to explore, or we would, the board would like to explore. And I also feel that just organically, some things are going to come up in your own research. When you talk to other towns, you might think, oh, hey, that's a great idea. You might have your own ideas and I think that's pretty welcome. You're residents of this town, it's your town and you play a part in its future. So yes, please provide those things that I might not be thinking about, they might not be thinking about. So that might get a pretty long term, but you get the idea. It's, it's fluid, as the Selectmen Gulat said.
I think of all the study committees we've had over the years or issues that have come up that we've asked residents to help us with, this is probably the most grassroots committee we have ever had because we're asking you to look at the structure of town government. I don't think it's been done since the town was formed, in all honesty.
Maybe it's time.
It's, but, but, I mean, as I say, we've had all sorts of committees that have been very successful and we've been able to get things done, but this is the basic structure of government and we don't have a town charter, okay? And we were just cut loose from, we were the self-purchased, cut loose from the city of Taunton and that became the town of Dayton. And eventually, Berkeley was cut loose from Dayton and formed their own community. But the existing town government has been here since pretty much 1712 or whenever they had their first meeting. So this is really important and this is one of the reasons why, when I made the motion, we stepped back and said, let's ask the people what they want to do with their town. So that's part of what you've been charged with.
Great. And thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'll do one last sweep for...
See if there's anybody here.
So for this, then I have to open up the hearing for this then?
Are you supposed to wait till 7:00?
Yeah, I know that, but I have to mention...
There are no other individuals for this item out there right now.
Okay. So maybe before we adjourn, we can just check to see if anybody came, but if not, if we could try to, Karen, if you could contact them and see if they can come next Wednesday and schedule them early in the meeting so that any of that who want to be considered, we can talk to them and, you know.
Great.
So it's early for our hearings, so why don't we go right into the administrator's report?
Sure, should I yield the floor to you?
No.
Okay. One of my items is actually not here yet either, so she'll be here at 7:30. But first, as you all know, we came before you to ask to schedule a public hearing for a crosswalk to be placed at Lane Field. This is on here because the newspaper notice had a typo in it and we've moved the public hearing. It was originally scheduled for June 12th. The newspaper notice had a typo, so we've moved that hearing and re-advertised for June 26th. And that notice to abutters did go out with the appropriate date, the correct date. So I'm just announcing that, that's a change and we will hear from abutters and our professional staff on that recommendation at that time.
So the abutters were notified of June 12th date or...
No, June 26th. June 26th.
What board is doing the hearing?
You.
Oh, okay. So it was us who did the newspaper?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe the paper said it was June 15th, which is a Saturday. I wasn't sure if you could make a break, so.
No.
You don't want to join us?
Nancy and I were available.
So that's all set. Item B, I will reserve if that's okay. And so we have talked a lot about speed issues on Forest Street. In working with the highway superintendent and the police chief, again, we would like to make some improvements to that area and this would be installing stop signs at Prospect Street and Forest Street and potentially at Spring Street and Forest Street. So there's just some competing recommendations, but again, I'd like to have a public hearing if you, if this board agrees that we should do something about that and we would do the same thing. We would advertise, we would send notice to the abutters so that they could weigh in and share their concerns. Speeding has been an issue there. We've moved that radar. We've previously had active patrols there. They did stop quite a few speeders. It's straight and it's open, so it's pretty inviting for a speed problem, but people do need to be cognizant that it's a residential area, a quite heavily populated one, and we do need to be careful. So that would be coming up in a future meeting if you're on board with, with going that route.
So do we notify everybody in that street?
It's a certain radius, it's 300 feet. So we got to pick where the stop... No, it's where the stop signs would be, so 300 radius from where that is, which probably encompasses the whole street when you're done with it, but...
Not really, but that's 300 feet.
300.
But it'll be advertised also.
Yes, and if you just live on Forest, I mean, it's a public meeting, you don't just have to be in a butter.
Right, yeah. Okay. Are you here for...
No, I'm not. And I don't want to interfere with the meeting. I just, I'm not going to be here tomorrow until, what, I get this permit signed by the Selectmen tonight. So if I just leave with the town administrator, we'll just make sure that it's done. So, okay? Downstairs.
Oh, yes, please do sign.
Yes, okay.
You're expedited.
For the quick work.
Thank you.
Suppose should we announce that a little bit? So at a previous meeting, we talked about some renovations to Town Hall and this would be the downstairs meeting room. A notice did go out to boards and committees that that meeting room will be unavailable for meetings during construction and we provided different rooms for them to go to in the event that they needed to do that. So just an update, we're rocking and rolling on that.
Mr. Chairman Myers?
Signing that. I did just want to mention, regarding the five... Mr. Chairman, Myers signing that. I did just wanna mention, um, regarding the five-year wish list, um, the downstairs, I don't know what the appropriate word is, renovation, I guess, um, or reallocation of space, I guess, um, was part of our wish list. What we agreed, um, we wanted to work on as part of our five-year plan. Um, and, um, in addition, we also got the funds necessary for the sewer expansion stu- uh, study approved at our June third annual town meeting. Um, so we are making a lot of progress.
Thank you to the voters for that.
Absolutely.
Do we know of any of the changes that wanna happen downstairs that the ADA coordinator needs to be notified of, or?
Um, everything is ADA compliant, 'cause it does, it is subject to the current building code. Um, I mean, I, I don't think we're chang- they're pretty quickly moving along, so I don't anticipate any changes from that first conversation.
And I thought when, uh, Mr. Agar outlined it, he also said that he would be working with, uh, Mr. Gale.
Right. That and with Mr. Gale during, when the food pantry thing happens, how that occurs, um-
Do we know if that's happened yet?
What do you mean, the meeting or?
Has it contacted the ADA coordinator?
I thought he talked to, uh, to him about it before he came here, before you, but I don't know that for certain and I can follow up on that.
Yeah, please. So we're gonna go on to new business?
Excuse me, what about the intern? Did I miss that?
Uh, I need, she's coming here at seven thirty, so I requested you delay that.
She's gonna be after this hearing, so that, she told her come at seven thirty, so we'll-
Did she, to come or did we ask her to come?
I asked her to come, because last time you wanted, um, you wanted to meet the intern.
I'm fine with her, uh, getting in.
What institution is she from?
Assumption.
Okay. I will mention that at the training I was at the, the past two weeks, Boston University still has interns available. There is no charge for them. Also, Northeastern University, as part of its co-op program, has interns available and I guess that one is a paid one. But, uh, when I heard that BU still did, because we used a person years ago, uh, but just a thought, when, you know-
You should probably contact them. Right, contact them so we can see if, like, they have any interns.
My only concern is that, is distance and like-
Well, I'm not sure how many would be, but there are some people maybe in the area that go to Boston.
So our program says that Dayton residents and Dayton affiliated, um, folks do get preference over everything, so we, I mean, we have two so far.
Yeah, so what the policy is in place for, for the non-paid interns that we've had, because they actually do it for part of their degree. And what we established was, they don't, don't pay them anything, but, but we didn't feel that was fair, because some did travel.
Right, and you paid for travel, right?
Twenty-five dollars a day stipend, or, or if you will, expense allowance for fuel and a meal or something. So, uh, if down there- We are going to need help with the programs that I'm working on, that we've gotta get together, and it's environmental thing. So BU might be, 'cause since the last person was environmental, it might be a good, uh, contact.
So why don't we go down to new business? Actually, too early for public input, I guess. Uh, new business, the first item is, we got a letter from the chief, uh, Robert McDonald, Police Department. Dear Board of Selectmen, I, Chief Robert McDonald from the Dayton Police Department, am requesting the transfer of our utility trail to the Dayton Fire Department. If this is approved by the Board of Selectmen, the Dayton Fire Department will be responsible for the registration, insurance, and maintenance of the vehicle listed below. And the two thousand and six shadow utility box trailer. Where is the wish of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of the two thousand and six utility trailer from Police Department to the Fire Department. And I assume because this is not a motor vehicle, we don't have to be concerned about-
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. The next item is, uh, from the fire chief, Chief McGee. Dear Board, the Fire Department will be transferring the following vehicle to the Police Department, nineteen ninety-seven Ford E three fifty van. This vehicle is in good condition and just passed its annual state and DOT inspections. Any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to contact me at any time. So this-
This is a problem.
Well, it's exempt to exempt. So before this, uh, landed here on the agenda, I verified that it's okay.
Oh, all right.
So, that was my first question, too.
Okay. Did we verify with the state?
Verified with you.
Yeah. I think that we should wait on this. I do think that, so I support this. I just wanna make sure before we vote on anything that it is okay. And I think what the town administrator is saying tonight is correct, that it's from one exempt department to another. Public safety and they don't have commercially available vehicles, um, that are fuel efficient, but I would just wanna verify before we act on this.
Is that a motion to table for tonight?
Yes, correct.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So just a, on the question, so will this be here at our next meeting, or?
I, I plan on calling tomorrow. I mean, it's just a phone call, yeah.
Okay, okay.
That's good.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention? The ayes have it.
Not that I don't trust my judgment, but-
No, it isn't. I get it. You wanna just verify. Trust, but verify.
Okay, so the next letter is, uh, it's a little sad, dated, uh, May thirtieth, to the Board of Selectmen. Please accept this letter as notification that I am retiring as the town accountant. The last day of service will be July fifteen, twenty nineteen. I would like to thank all of the Board of Selectmen members in my thirteen years and five months of service, which have supported and appointed me to serve as the town, the town of Dayton, and all of its residents as the town accountant and former liaison to the procurement officer. I would also like to thank all the departments that have supported me during my career. I wish the town of Dayton all the best wishes. Jennifer Louise. So I guess we need a motion to accept?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resignation of our town accountant, Jennifer Louise, uh, effective July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, with thanks and appreciation for many years of service.
Now, I'll second that.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention? The ayes have it. Unfortunately, we're losing a very, uh, good worker and, uh, we wish her, uh, well in her retirement. The next, uh, item is a review and act on the quote from the, for the front entrance door, power doors access to the police station.
At a previous meeting, uh, you had accepted the generous donation from Easy Access, which is the bulk of this project. Uh, but in conjunction with that, there are two other vendors that need to be hired in order to pull off the whole project. And these are those two vendors. Um, and we are just looking for your approval.
And these, uh, the prices are reasonable?
Absolutely, yes.
So we have one from American Electrical Construction. I can ma- obviously I can mention the amount, I still kept, uh, for, uh, four thousand nine hundred dollars. And we have a second, uh, one for different work that needs to be done, uh, for Convergent Technologies, and that's one thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Can we vote on these together, or we have to vote on each individual one?
No, you can vote together. Um, Mr. Gale did ask about this project and, uh, I did email him and keep him updated. Uh, I think he's okay. He didn't respond otherwise and it's been a few days. He's had an opportunity to-
Did he, did he receive this information here?
I asked for clarification why he would need specifically this, um, but I hadn't heard back from him. But this is who Easy Access uses and that's a gentleman that has done all of our work in the past, so. I'm confident that it's fitting the bill, uh, so to speak.
Did I already get a motion on it?
No. Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the contract to provide I got this, what do we call this?
Convergent Technologies?
No, that's the company.
Oh.
Um, oh, excuse me. Mr. Chairman, I move that we award the front entrance power door access for the new police station communication center to American Electrical Construction Incorporated at a price of four thousand nine hundred dollars and we award a, the contract for the access hardware and opener connections for the door to Convergent Technologies at a bid price of one thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Is there a second? Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstention? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is a letter that we got from, uh, the police chief, from Chief McDonald, dated, uh, May fifteenth. Actually, it's addressed to, uh, Chief McDonald, from, uh, retired Sergeant Edward Dutra. Chief McDonald, I am planning on spending the summer of twenty nineteen in Dayton. Beginning in June, on June first, I am asking to be reappointed as a special officer. All my certifications are up to date and available on request. I retired in twenty seventeen from the town of Dayton. I would greatly appreciate the opportunity to work for the town and police department. I also understand that the Board of Selectmen appoint on recommendations by the chief of police. It would be an honor and privilege to again serve the department. Thank you for your consideration on this matter and I look forward to hearing from you. Retired Sergeant Edward Dutra. I did have an opportunity to speak to the, uh, the police chief and he is in favor of this. Uh, so he would recommend that, uh, Mr. Dutra be, uh, appointed. Are any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for either, um, you, Mr. Chairman, or Madam Administrator. Is this, what is, uh, if we're going to appoint, um, former Sergeant Dutra as a special officer, is this gonna be for the entire, like, what is the length of period that we're gonna appoint? Is it open-ended? Do we have a date?
All appointments have an expiration, so you'd set an expiration. And it looks like he's only here for a couple of months, though. So I don't know what your expiration is.
My question is, so if we do appointments in July, then do we have to reappoint, like, if he's going to be here until, you know, September? I'm just making this up. Do we have to reappoint again for the next fiscal year?
Is he coming back? We don't know.
But what I'm saying-
Like, this, if he's coming back routinely and regularly, yes, you would reappoint every fiscal year.
No, that's not my question. My question-
Yeah, what he's asking is, we can appoint now to June thirtieth? It's a thirty, right, not a thirty-first, thirtieth?
Yeah.
And do we need, will we be reappointing him on July first?
Oh, I don't think you should do. If you're gonna appoint him, just, it's so close to the fiscal year, but he's does he come, like, when does his requested start date, you know? Maybe it is after July. I would just, I, if you're gonna appoint him, there's no sense in appointing him for three weeks. You would just appoint him for the duration.
I guess, uh, do we have the authority that? It's my question. Do we have to do it again after July first?
You do have the authority. No, you don't, do not have to do it again.
Are we able to appoint him for the whole year? In other words, he goes back to where he lives in September, comes back again in June of next, uh, next year? Will we have to go through this process, process till July first? Or can we just, if we appoint him for the whole fiscal year plus from this date, I understand, I think he's in Virginia?
I think where you have a record, you have a record of, he's only in Dayton for the summer of two thousand and nineteen. I would only, if I were to appoint him, I would only do it for the time that he's saying that he's gonna be here. I wouldn't-
That's valid. And then if he wants to do it the next summer, then, okay, that's fine.
Right, it's on, it's on him to-
He'd come back, okay.
Are you entertaining?
Yes, I am.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint, uh, retired Sergeant Edward Dutra as a special officer, uh, effective June first, twenty nineteen, through August-
Thirty-first, I guess.
Is there thirty-one days? Thirty-first. Thank you.
Yes.
I believe there is. Is, is there a thirty?
Yes, there is. You know this? Yeah.
Twenty nineteen.
Is there a second?
Uh, I'll second for discussion purposes.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Um, I've got concerns about this appointment, because we had two retired police officers. One, a retired as a lieutenant, one retired as a chief, who applied for the same kind of appointment a few years ago. The appointments were not made because of the amount of time between retirement and return.
Six years.
Um, the concern about liability insurance for such a short-term appointment, because normally this, this is traffic duty and it's some of the hazardous duty that we have. Um, is there a need to do this? And, uh, the main concern is fairness across the board and how we treat, um, retired employees who wish to come back. Those are my main concerns.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not-
So what is the fairness issue?
I'm not sure what's happened in the past, but this, uh, you were correct when you said six years. He's entitled to come back and, uh, work at, uh, as an officer for up to six years and after that, he would have to go through, uh, special training. He's, he's gonna be retired two years come July. So I, I'm in favor of, uh, this reappointment. As far as I know, we've never had an issue or concern where he was, uh, an officer in this town, yeah.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure what the liability concerns are, but what I will say is, um, this town was lucky for the service that Sergeant Dutra gave to us when he was an active employee. Um, and I think that this town is also lucky that as someone who has retired, um, he wants to come back in a special officer capacity.
Okay. And this has nothing to do with officer Dut- uh, actually Sergeant Dutra's performance? Not at all. I'm only looking back at what has occurred in the past.
Well, it sounded like those individuals, uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, it sounded like the individuals that were mentioned had, were beyond that six years and would have required a recertification. Um, so I don't think that that's applicable to what is before us this evening.
I agree. Any other questions? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions?
No.
Uh, the ayes have it. So we still got a few minutes, so let's go to the next, uh, item.
Actually, if it's possible, can we go back to, um, item B under the town administrator's report, very quickly?
Sure.
Sorry. About four minutes.
Old habits, I don't- Somebody took my gavel. Yes.
Uh, so, we previously had an intern in town, um, in the accounting office. It was incredibly successful. It worked out very well both ways. We actually had that Google document because of him, um, that we relied so much upon, uh, for our budget season and made it go so, um, so very well and organized. So, uh, we're back at it again and it's also another accounting student. Uh, this is Emily Stevens. She goes to Assumption. And, uh, she's interested in municipal finance basically on a whole, so we thought we would share her between the accounting office, the treasurers, and in some, uh, instances here in our office to get the non-monetary viewpoint of municipal finance. Um, so I wanted you to be able to meet her. She's ready to start, um, this fiscal year, if you'll appoint her as such. And, um, we're excited to get her in here and, and get learning with her.
So I'm gonna ask that you sit in the hot seat, I mean, the podium, and, uh, so we may have some questions, if you don't mind. Well, you're going to a very nice school. I got my master's degree at Assumption College, so, uh-
Are you biased?
I could be. Uh, so I, I am pleased and happy that, uh, you're applying for this position. I read your resume. I'm impressed with your resume. And I think you would be an asset to this, uh, this town. Do either of you have a question?
I, uh, so I don't have a question per se. You look familiar. Just kidding. Um, I do just wanna express a, um, certain joy over the fact that, um, you're, you're sort of following in the family footsteps. Um, and it sounds like you might be interested in a career in public service, so I'm really excited to hear that. Um, and I'm excited to support, uh, this request today. Thank you.
I'm also happy to see that you've applied. I like the fields of study. Uh, my master's is in management, um, with a minor in accounting way back a hundred years ago. I, I really think it's, I, I think it's great that residents who are, uh, going to school that have some break time come back to the town. There is a dire need for people who are qualified as municipal accountants and to serve in that whole field, because it's completely different from business accounting. Uh, very important. So, um, I'm glad you're applying. Thank you.
So if we, if we vote on this appointment, is there a specific time period that we, we need to?
May twentieth through August twentieth. Is that, am I wrong?
Uh, sure. I think we settled on the last Thursday in August, or right before you head back to Assumption. Um, and she's so gracious and willing to move around from office to office, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, but yes, I think she's eager to begin right away, right? And we'll have her there, uh, for payroll and bills, the important stuff.
So I'll entertain a motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, appoint, um, Ms. Emily Stevens as a, an intern uh, through August twentieth, two thousand, uh, nineteen. August twentieth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Congratulations.
Welcome to the town.
Hopefully, you'll get to spend some time with our town accountant before she retires.
That is the plan. Uh, no, next week.
Right now.
Next week, but come in and fill out her paperwork tomorrow.
Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're coming in at a good time, too, because there's a fiscal closing coming up, and so you'll get to see what happens when the fiscal year ends.
And do you have any ideas to how much free cash we're gonna have?
(laughing) It's an important question.
Thank you. Yeah, not yet. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So we're gonna open up the, the hearing that we had a couple of weeks ago, continuation of that hearing on the liquor license transfer for seventeen twenty, seventeen twelve Restaurant and Tavern, I believe is the name. Right?
Yes.
So I think the concerns that we had at the last meeting have been resolved and settled. Does any member have any questions other than when they're gonna open up?
Yes. And what the hours will be. No, I'm just kidding.
And the menu?
Exactly. I just wanted to thank Attorney Fredericks and everyone present for being patient while, while we got everything resolved, and I think, I don't wanna speak for anyone, but I think where we will vote in favor of this, I think everybody is excited about this, so I just wanted to thank you all for hanging in there.
Can I just speak quickly?
Sure. Please.
As you guys, well, as this board well knows, time is money, and these folks were, of no fault of their own delayed, certainly no fault of yours, you have to do your screenings. Is there any way we can expedite this and get this to the A, B, C's as quickly as possible so I can try to get them open as quickly as possible to answer your question?
Well, it would just be tomorrow.
Yes, can we, can we just get it up tomorrow? Because I, I've been trying, I've been talking to the council, just trying to advise them, because I have another one up there, and he's saying if I can get it to them, we might be able to go.
So we don't have that court sort of sway with the A, B, C, C. I'm a little jealous of that, but, you know, our plan is if it's favorable, tonight it'll be tomorrow.
If you could send it tomorrow, yeah, if you could send it tomorrow, that's all I'm asking, and then I'll take it from there.
Very reasonable.
Do you, oh, I'm sorry.
So it's approved, do we all sign that?
Yes, it's, it used to be called a Form forty-three, and now it's an L.L.A. or something like that. So yes, you, you sign it, and it goes, it goes off.
And it gets transmitted up, and then I have to deal with them there.
You'll sign it tonight as part of this hearing if the vote's favorable.
There's vacation schedules and stuff like that coming up at the Boston Division, so I, I have a short window to try to get this done, and I'm hoping I can quickly.
I would bring it there myself if I could.
So would I.
Do you have, just curiosity now, do you have a, an idea of when it would be open, aside from being able to serve?
So, so the, I mean, I think it's as soon as we can get the liquor license open, so, I mean, a liquor license process, you can take up to six weeks. I, I've had some experience where they've been running them a little quicker, as long as there's no problems with the financials. You've seen, you've seen the situation here, so this shouldn't be an issue. And then there's, as long as there's no background issues, and you guys have already seen what that looks like. So if those two issues really don't arise, and you've got, you know, all the other certifications, and we're, I think, we have the certificate of good standing from the last owner, so I don't think there'll be any problems. So we've taken all the preventative steps to try to make it as quick as possible, but you never know.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If you can open before the liquor license, there are a lot of people in this town that are looking for a nice restaurant to go for-
A restaurant.
No pressure.
Dinner or whatever, and I, and I, and I really mean that.
That's true.
The liquor will, liquor license will enhance it, but if there's any chance that you can open before then, everyone keeps saying, when are they gonna open? When are they gonna open? And I said, we have the hearing tonight, so just something to consider.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we grant the liquor license transfer to Seventeen Twelve Corporation Incorporated from Giorgio's.
I will second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion, questions? I do have a question. Will there be any Portuguese food on the menu?
(laughing).
I'll leave that to my client.
The vote's not contingent on that.
My legal representative just indicated that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
And we wish you the best.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
So, public input. Is there any public input?
I'm dying. The thing broke. It's broke. Well, which is why I'm like this.
Just, we're not voting on it tonight, just so, you know, if that's what you're waiting for.
You just wanna hang out with us, I know.
They just care.
I just, I just have a question from the last meeting. We discussed safety issues at the elementary school. How is that going?
They put a sign up, they have a police officer for one day, they put a speed sign for about a week, and now it's back to.
My understanding, though, Madam Administrator, and I hope that she will elaborate, was that there was a discussion with public safety personnel, and it was stated that the issue had improved. I'll defer to you on that.
So, of course, when someone was present, the issue improved, and then even the radar thing improved things as well. But it's about changing traffic and driving habits. Yes, the area is congested. Yes, there are a lot of people entering one spot, so it really is a lot of personal responsibility while we figure this out. The administrative folks at the school have met with our Tom Ferry and our Jim Aguirre. The, then, Jim, Tom met with an engineer, so we've, oh, you know, you all know this.
He just filled me in, actually. I just talked to him, and I was like-
Oh, great, okay.
He's like, I'm trying to leave.
So I actually did email this to the administrative folks over there, so where, and I am included the principal and the facilities manager for the district, but the principal at D E S. Once we get the documents from the engineer for the preliminary plan, there will be another meeting, because it differs from what was decided upon that, upon that first meeting. So it is a work in progress. It's just a little slow, because it's all, it's government, and it takes time for us to get the accurate reports that we need in order to create a safe situation. But the good news is that we first thought that it might take a little bit longer due to moving some fields, and they don't think that that's necessary, so that's actually really great news. But I can certainly, you know, we've, we simultaneously had speed complaints on Forest Street, and it turns out if you leave that radar thing there for three days or more, people start to ignore it. So we moved it, and we can move it back as a friendly reminder that, yes, we're still trying to.
Yeah, and I just wanna add to, you know, Sergeant McGurk, McGurk. The day that he was there, I have to tell you the morale with the kids, high-fiving to, to see a police officer there conducting the law and making people stop. The kids really, you know, responded well to that. And I can't tell you how much it supports the staff there. You know, I know that there are more maybe important things that they could be doing during that time, but in my opinion, as a parent, what's more important is keeping our kids safe. And on that note, now that we have Sergeant Dutra back, we would love to see him at D E S again, high-fiving the kids and keeping them, you know, safe across the block.
Letting know that.
But that's just a special request on me. But no, I will say, it helped for the time being. Today, yeah, I had to grab my son again because someone was flying to get, to pull over on the side where the stop sign is, parked right in front of the stop sign. So, is it getting better now? But we're, we have two weeks left to write this out, and I'm hoping and praying that this gets solved over the summer. I'm praying that this budget does not, the school budget does not interfere with making that happen, and if, and if the townspeople have to rally again to help make this happen, I have faith that we will make it happen, because it has to happen. It's just too congested, and that's all I'm saying. But thank you for supporting us.
Of course.
So is the plan that this will be done by September? So the funds are available?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know. The engineer has to come, everyone has to agree, but everyone at that table, I wasn't the president, but I know, everyone at that table wants the same goal, and they wanna get it resolved. I'm not gonna promise by September, but I think in two thousand nineteen, yes, but I'm not gonna promise by September.
And Jim, our building inspector, I just, he was very positive about it, and, you know, and very supportive as well that it needs to be done, and I have faith between him and Mr. Ferry that that plan is a good plan, and it started a year and a half, a year and a half ago, and, you know, it needs to come to fruition, so let's just hope that it does.
It will also help greatly. We had spotlight night last night with the D E S chorus singing, and the number of people attending that event, if there were to be an emergency, an emergency vehicle trying to get in there, never mind people trying to get out, would have been awful to try to save, because there was just parking issues and-
And it's just to piggyback on that, too, John. Field Day at the elementary school is Monday, the tenth, and just like the Halloween parade that we all love, there will be parking all the way down Center Street, so I don't know if it might make sense to perhaps make the police department aware of that. I'm sure the school might do that already, but it is very congested if there is, I mean, for me to have a plan, they, meaning the school, when they have these large events. I know about that event, because it was too many people. Quite possibly could have been shut down, too many people. So they do need to have a plan in place to control all of that traffic and all of the people coming, whether it's parking over here and having a bus shuttle people over just to make it safer, because if you get the police and fire involved, they have certain responsibilities and requirements of the law that may not go over so well.
Right. Those things go away because of that.
Well, right, so if they can, you know, we've got parking here, shuttling a bus over, you just get a, just what they do normally, you know, get a detail and have people cross, or even just one cruiser and cross Somerset Ave, and then when it's over, the car comes back and they cross back so they can safely travel. So, and I'm not saying the kids do that, but, you know, adults.
No, right.
And then work in concert with the police. But if there's some sort of plan to displace the load of traffic to another area, I'm, I'm on board with that. I don't know how else to diplomatically say that.
No, thank you. Okay, so going back to-
I think we're on, Mr. Chairman, seven F?
Yeah. Appointment of Peter Karen to the zoning Board of Appeals, so we had a letter we read earlier, and we had some concerns, but it's the Honorable Selectman. If possible, may I be appointed to the zoning Board of Appeals? My past seventeen years of experience make me an ideal candidate to serve on the Board, and it's Peter D. Karen. We did have a, we expressed a concern that we had, because the relationship between this individual and the chairman of the committee, they're related, and we wanna make sure that there was no conflicts. So they were to contact the Ethics Board Commission.
Right, which they did.
Could you-
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't know if you were gonna say it. Yes, they did. And I spoke with the current chairman, Mr. Karen, who had a conversation with the Ethics Commission. If Mr. Peter Karen is appointed tonight, they have to file with the town clerk a certain conflict of interest form. There are many, I can't remember the exact one for this one.
They're gonna do the appearance of conflict of interest.
So they have to do the conflict of interest form, file with the town clerk, and then it is incumbent upon them to make sure that they don't facilitate a quorum in some way by accident, and to-
The dinner table?
Well, I'm not gonna, I don't know, but, right, that they are not, you know, speaking about it at home. I, my suggestion is just to very much be cognizant of that, and how a disgruntled, perhaps disgruntled developer who doesn't get a permit could use that, and just to address it head-on.
Are you making a, like, a recommendation? Do you have any, before we vote, any, do you have, like, any concerns?
Um, so the way I understand it, the Z B A has six members, and it alternates who's on which decision, and I guess my, to be safe, like, as a general rule, those two should not serve on the same project together, if that, if they can.
Like, the case?
Yeah, the case, if they can avoid it, they should.
Yeah, so they, wherever case that goes before the Z B A, they pick three members from the Board, so they six members, so they could appoint three to listen to one case, appoint a three to listen to another case, and the both of them, there's no need for them to be on the same.
Right, if they can avoid it, they should, and I think that shows a good faith effort to seriously avoid the conflict of interest, so.
And if for some reason they're not able to avoid it, they need to let whoever, developer, whoever's going before them-
If they declare it, and then go from there.
I think even if, Mr. Chairman, even if they weren't on the same case, and we, and we know this from being on the zoning board, that sometimes someone can't make it to a meeting, and there, you just, there's not really enough people to pick from, and so, you know, by circumstance, three people get on a case. I'm not too concerned about that, because you could always say whether they're on the same case or not, you could levy an accusation that there was impropriety. So, I appreciate your words of caution.
Right, of course, I just, I'm just saying, like, if they, if they are actively showing how they're trying to avoid it, that's a win for the town, if anything comes up.
Absolutely. Was it made clear, either Mr. Chairman or Madam Administrator, to the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, kind of what we just spoke about, like, not to pick, you know, the relative as a member on that particular case?
I told him it's incumbent upon them to do all they can to not have a conflict.
Okay.
But hopefully, he's watching tonight, and he can see this for reference if he needs it.
Do they both have to file forms with the town clerk?
They both file, they both file.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, that's what we asked him to do, and, you know.
Have they filed that to date?
No, they do it after, if he's appointed, because you don't wanna assume that he's appointed, so they do it after.
Are you accepting motion, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Peter Karen to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I just, he's a wealth of knowledge, and I, I personally was fortunate enough, like you were, to serve with him, and I welcome him back.
I do. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention? The ayes have it. He's appointed to the Board. Review, buy recycle statement.
The Board of Health is seeking a grant in the amount of fifty-four hundred dollars from D E P. They want to use this grant to bolster some of their recycling initiatives, and they've been pretty active in this role, so I'm happy to support them, but they're not giving us a ton of time to do this. So as part of D E P's requirements for a grant, the town must operate in a buy-recycled mentality and make a commitment, which for us, I think, makes sense, given our green community status and our, you know, ways in which we wanna conserve, and we're very pro-recycling and reducing waste. The caveat here is I'm worried about pigeonholing us into something that we would end up with a less workable product, in the sense that recycled paper often gets jammed in certain copiers. So I had sent you a memo listing out some of my concerns and gave you a sample of what D E P has. They have four samples. The one I gave you was the most specific. I would actually recommend and would like to go to a more general one, of which, you know, two, two examples of that is in your packet today. I actually am more partial to the behavioral one, and so I'm looking for you to basically pick which you'd like to adopt, and then it is our duty, my duty really, to remind everybody when they're purchasing that they should choose buy recycled whenever possible and whatever it makes the most sense to the town. I wanted to be less specific, because with all of the changes going on with, you know, I wanted to be less specific because with all of the changes going on with, you know, other countries not accepting our recyclables, we might get stuck in trouble. So I want us to be a little bit more vague at this time.
Is there a reason, Madam Administrator, that beside, I, I guess maybe it's the specificity is what I'm gathering?
Yes.
That you prefer the Haverhill statement to the Redding statement?
It's the specificis- wow, I can't say that word. Specificity of it. Um, recycled paper in this last bid was actually more expensive, not by a major bid, but it, yeah, not by a lot.
We're not talking a great deal of monies.
However, that could change, um, depending on what's going on. And buying recycled is not always feasible because we're trying to, and this is, it's not just about paper. It's about everything. You're supposed to buy everything recycled or make how you can. So I don't ever want the town to be in a position where they're forced to do something that may not be in the best interest. So I like, at this point, where everything is a little bit in turmoil due to the world's situation of recycling and that industry as a whole, I'd, at this time, like to do a general statement. That is also because the Board of Health is not giving us significant time to do this. We have to have this in place by June twelfth.
June twelfth?
I'm not saying I'm not open to it in the future, but given, you know, one week to act on it, I don't, I don't want to get us stuck by something I'm not maybe thinking about.
So is that the intention, Mr. Chairman or Madam Administrator, to, like, approve?
I'm looking for.
For example, the, the Haverhill language and then, like, do we need to act tonight?
Yes.
It sounds like yes.
Yes, it needs to be, if you do this, it needs to be in place. If you don't do it, they don't apply for their grant. I mean, that's okay. I mean, it's not something we have now, it's a nice thing for them to do. I appreciate their forward thinking, I appreciate they're looking for other ways to pay for things. Um, so I want to do my part to assist in that. However, it's not a lot of time to do the research that I feel more comfortable doing. So that's why, that's why I recommend the general statement. And three out of the four samples are general, I think we should.
So if we approve, who, um, are, are you expected to then go and like draft this?
Right, correct. And as the chief procurement officer, yes.
Okay.
And then it's my job to send it out every year as a reminder that anybody purchasing items for the town of Dayton should try in their best efforts to buy recycled products.
I have no.
It's not very laborious, it's, it's just.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that, um, Mrs. Aaron Steen, on behalf of the town, issue a quote, buy recycled, unquote, statement based on, not based on, similar to the policy used by Haverhill.
Second. Second, any discussion? So I'm a big fan of recycling, as I, I think everybody on the board is. And I would like to make as much effort as we can to have it go forward. And one of the things is, and it's pointed out one of these, is that by buying recycled items, you're actually helping it. You're making, setting up a market for it. So I'm, I'm in favor of it. Somewhere down the road, I would hope that we can get a little stricter with this. Uh, this is, uh, a little vague. And I just want to, uh, point out that, uh, this Haverhill, uh, the person who wrote this, last name is Pacheco.
I was just gonna tease you about her.
Conspiracy people out there.
That's not why I chose it.
I have no idea who this person is.
You don't know Orlando?
We may, we may be related somewhere in Sami Gal, Azos. Uh, but I don't know who this person is, so I just wanted to give.
Mr. Chairman, I know Orlando well.
Oh?
I can rest assured, you are not related to him.
I better not see him in any family photo.
He was actually a member of the committee that I serve on at MMA for a period of time.
Small world.
I mean, we're all related in one sense.
So what I'm thinking to your point, Mr. Chairman, um, is perhaps we could use this kind of, um, more general statement for a dis- a broader discussion in the future on maybe a policy or a procedure that's a little bit more specific.
And, and my intent right now is to allow the town administrator to meet the deadline so the Board of Health can apply for their grant and have this on file. But it's going to be loose enough so that we're not confined and, and we can tighten it up in the future if conditions change.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Removal, the next item is, uh, H, removal of report fees for the permit fee schedule. It's my understanding that the report fees for the ambulance and fire are being removed from this list.
Yes, that is correct. Um, it's no longer allowed to charge for reports. And because this board is charged with setting for permit fees and, and approving them, I need you to approve this list without, with those removed. Or approve the removal, I guess.
Do you know why they were removed?
What's that? Public records. So the public records law, if you are requesting something, the town is not supposed to charge. It used to be you got six cents for black and white and like, I can't remember color, but.
I remember that.
I never gave out the color, no, I'm just kidding.
We weren't printing it.
So, so what my concern is.
It doesn't cost him that to do it, I add to.
No, no, not, not the fees. What's in an ambulance report? This is not the report that says we picked up so-and-so and transported them.
So that would be if somebody was, so this has nothing to do with vetting whether or not somebody can have access to it. That's not what I'm, but that doesn't open up the ballgame to anybody, open, you know, you still have to follow HIPAA.
The information is still protected.
Right, absolutely. This is just getting us in a, you know, we need to remove that because it's not legal for us to charge and we're not going to be charging, so.
And, and your concerns, like, was more like personal health information, et cetera.
Personal information, yeah. No, that's not allowed anyway.
That's what I wanted to know, I mean.
Um, are you accepting motions, Mr. Chairman? I could make a motion that we remove from the schedule of fees, the, uh, report ambulance twenty-five dollar permit fee and the, uh, report fire twenty-five dollar fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. Aye, the next item is aye, discuss length of time to keep flags up on Somerset Avenue. As everybody's aware, we have the flags up.
They look great by the way.
Of Alvinus, initially she brought it to our attention, Mr. Ferry.
I thought we already had decided this.
I think we discussed it, but I'm not sure we decided.
We talked about until October, but there was no motion.
Okay.
So I, and also Labor Day, I think, too, so.
Well, Veterans Day was mentioned too.
My, my belief was that from Memorial Day to Labor Day, they should be up. And then be put up again for Veterans Day, you know, a couple of days before, a couple of days after, whatever we wanted to, but.
Because of the weather?
The weather, I think, is gonna make the, you know, we'll be placing the flags, yeah.
And that makes sense, Mr. Chairman.
When we were talking, we, when Mr. Ferry and I were talking about this, um, the concern was how much work it's gonna create up and down, up and down. The other thought was, uh, Memorial Day to, um, Labor Day or Columbus Day. And then we said, well, actually, the last, if you will, Military Day is November eleventh. And the concern was that by the time Labor Day has rolled around from Memorial Day, those flags are not gonna be in the greatest condition and leaving them up to Veterans Day, when they come down, they'll be appropriately disposed of. Because we said, over the length of time, regardless of whether they're cotton or nylon or whatever, a year outside, they take, they take a toll. So that, that's all we talked about as far as, obviously, we don't want the highway department up and down, up and down. And that's not what you're suggesting, but we're thinking of the life of the flag also.
I also think, so, I dare I say this, it's hurricane season from September through then.
Actually, June first.
So, well, right, so your, our likelihood is towards the latter, but then they would be up and down, up and down. Because if the goal is to keep it up till Veterans Day, you want to take them down for any, you know, they could be a safety hazard at that point as well. So if we had a predictable storm, so I don't know if that's something to consider. I know that's being ultra cautious, but it's who I am.
If we had a predictable storm and they were taken down, then it would be a question whether or not you should put them up again depending upon what the season is, so.
And if there's a storm coming, does the highway department have time to deal with the flags versus other things that they're gonna be dealing with?
Like actual safety concerns, no, I totally agree.
So what are the time that people are thinking of then?
What about this, do you want to just see how they last this year and then we can? They might be great.
Make it through November, and the other thing too is.
We have no idea, right, we don't know.
It doesn't have to be a hurricane. I mean, we could have a severe thunderstorm or a something else.
Remember that windstorm we had not long ago? There was no rain, but all those trees came down because it was just like a fierce wind.
And if we do it, say, Memorial Day to Veterans Day, and we rely on Mr. Ferry for feedback. If he says, you know, we gotta change this because this isn't gonna work. I don't think we're gonna get any extra life out of the flags, meaning fading and damage. So maybe for this year, it's a trial run.
Sure.
And, um, we rely on Mr. Ferry to let us know.
So we try to go to Veterans Day and see how far we get.
And if Mr. Ferry says they gotta come down. For all we know, if we get severe weather or really whatever, those flags may not last the entire season, in which case we'd take them down anyhow.
And it's my understanding we have two extra flags just in case something.
A pole goes down or something snaps or whatever.
Any other myriad of problems that could arise, sure.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion that, uh, for this year, uh, the flags went up in time for Memorial Day, that if weather permits and with the recommendation of Mr. Ferry, we leave them up until November eleventh. And we rely on him for guidance on this.
For, for like future dates. I'm gonna second that, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? If not, my pen just broke. Call a recess, no. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Just something that we talked about that you might want to consider for next year? We would love to see flags on Center Street from the bridge to, um, one thirty-eight. Because number one, it's the gateway to this town for most of the traffic. Number two, it's wide open. That would be one gorgeous sight. There are no trees, there's no houses, there's nothing, it's open farmland. And if down the road, we think about expanding that, it would be gorgeous. And I'm only suggesting it as something to think about.
I definitely think that's worthy of a discussion.
I, I can just picture coming over that bridge and seeing those flags, just beautiful.
I'd be concerned about the cost, but, uh, because we've, we've done this now, let's see how this works before we start. See how long the flags last and everything else.
Right, exactly.
We can revisit this, obviously, again.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
So the next item is J, first reading of the credit card, uh, town credit card use policy. I'll read the, uh, policy, thank you.
Thank you.
Town of Dayton, town credit card use policy. Background, the town of Dayton, from time to time, finds it necessary to make purchases via credit card. Recognize the requirements of various vendors that receive online payments only. The town decides to establish a policy and procedure relative to the use of the town credit card and to implement various rules and restrictions to prevent fraudulent use of credit cards. The purpose, the purpose of this policy is to establish perimeters for use of the town credit card in an effort to improve internal controls and to ensure that the town maintains compliance with established procurement policies and laws while affording to the town the ability to purchase items online when it is in the best interest of the town to do so. The policy also protects the town from legal liability due to inappropriate use of credit cards. And Fitbit is telling me I'm, I'm still for too long, so I might have to stand up now. Policy, number one, the town credit card shall be kept and maintained by the town treasurer. As such, the treasurer is the cardholder. No other office shall have access to the card without the treasurer's involvement. The town treasurer may not give the card or card number out to any office. Two, the credit card is only to be used in the following situations. One, emergencies that of, are of public safety nature. Two, only if a purchase order cannot be issued or cannot be paid through the normal accounts payable warrants process. Three, charges for supplies and equipment shall not exceed five hundred dollars per item without approval, approval from the town administrator. Four, conference and or training registration. And five, other items specifically authorized by the town administrator. Number three, when requesting use of the credit card, employees must show that the purchase meets the above stated requirements and must provide the vendor's name and amount of the product. The requester must also provide the budget line and tenant's pay for the items prior to processing the online transactions. Four, users must submit the town tax ID form to the vendor to ensure that tax will not be charged. In the rare event that the vendor is unable to prevent the charge of a tax, users must receive approval from the town administrator prior to the use of the credit card. Five, upon verifying that the goods and or services purchased with a credit card have been received by the town, department heads are required to authorize payment of the charge by signing the original receipt and to timely submit schedules of bills payable for payment. Therefore, any use of the credit card must also be approved by the respective department head of the employee requesting this, or use. The department head shall then submit the bill scheduled with the original receipt signed by, signed to the treasurer. Six, any incentive programs benefits derived by use of the town credit card shall become property of the town. The town administrator will determine the use of such incentive program benefits. Seven, the town of Dayton will be billed monthly on one statement which will be received by the treasurer as cardholder. The treasurer shall reconcile purchases with submitted bills payable provided by the department head. Upon satisfactory review, the treasurer shall submit the credit card statements, statement to bill payables with the previously submitted bills payable provided by the department heads. All purchases made by the credit, with the credit card shall be paid within the grace period so that no interest charge or penalties will accrue. If receipts are submitted late because of finance charges, the responsible party may have their credit card used revote. Prohibited uses. A, the credit card shall not be used for personal purchases of any kind. Use of, use of credit cards for personal purchases or expenses for the intention of reimbursement, the town is strictly prohibited and will result in disciplinary action. B, splitting charges to avoid the five hundred dollar transaction limit without approval of the town administrator, except for the credit card is prohibited. C, no cash advances, ATM, traveler's checks, money orders, et cetera, are not, are allowed. No cash advances, ATM, traveler's checks, money orders, et cetera, are allowed using the credit card. D, the credit card shall not be used to pay statements of any kind. Security, lack of proper documentation and authorization will result in the loss of credit card privileges. Two, random audits may be conducted for credit card activity and receipt retention as well as other internal account control. Three, failure to comply with this policy may result in loss of credit card privileges and or personal liability. And four, all unauthorized expenses will not be paid by the town of Dayton. The town of Dayton deserves the right to collect payments for unauthorized expenditures from the employee. This is something that you prepared.
Yes, and not alone. Uh, I just want to thank the town accountant and the town treasurer for their assistance. Just a couple of comments, uh, so that the town doesn't think we're nuts. Um, the treasurer holds it because this is a form of borrowing and she's also bonded. And, um, we do not have any incentive programs on the credit card that we have, but just in the event that we do, I wanted that in there.
An Amazon credit card that gives us point device?
No, no, we don't have that. I don't believe there's any incentive. So I just wanted that in there in the event that we did, um, so that it was addressed. Um, and it, it would be property of the town at that point, like if we got a gift card or something, it's then property of the town. Um, so I wanted people to be aware of that.
I do have one, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. Just, um, I think the word shall needs to be inserted under policy number seven, where it says, upon satisfactory review, the treasurer shall submit the credit card statement to bills payable. So that's the only, um, suggestion, uh, for edits that I have. I do just want the public to know that there's, there are very practical reasons why a town credit card is needed. And I'll give you a very brief example. We have a dot gov website address, which is very valuable to have, um, and we don't want to lose it. However, for whatever reason, um, we cannot use a purchase order to renew our website domain, the dot gov website domain. So what had been happening in the past is that some town official, um, and perhaps it was a different official every time, but they would have to use their personal card to renew the website domain. And it's very expensive and then they would have to wait for reimbursement. So I just want the public to be aware that there is a practical element, um, to having a town credit card. Um, and I appreciate the town administrator, along with the town accountant, taking the time to hash out a policy um, that really has strict, um, reasoning and guidelines, um, for usage of said card. So thank you.
Absolutely, and I, I also, I should tell this as well, I did poll other communities to see where their, who had a credit card in their town, who held it, um, and how many they had and what their procedure was. So this, this was an educated, um, policy.
Do we have the card yet?
We do, and I've used it, well, the treasurer with her approval on quite a few of the data things that.
What kind of card is it, MasterCard, Visa, whatever?
I don't know, I don't input it, I couldn't even tell you.
So you don't know the card number?
So it's really tied.
No, no, this is all the treasurer, what's that?
What bank is it?
Bristol County.
Okay, as long as it's a bank, we're doing business with that, that's good.
Nope, it's Bristol County. Uh, she called a handful to see what the best rate was. Um, there was an annual charge that we couldn't get out of, we tried. Um, but we have this policy, a strict practice, so that we don't encumber any late fees or interest and that it's paid off constantly. So how it works is you say, hey, Mary, I need to buy this, um, I need you to come into my office, it's all ready. You get up from your desk, she sits there, she inputs the number. Uh, you print out a receipt immediately, you print out a bill schedule immediately, you sign both and, uh, go forward. And she keeps it so that when the statement comes in on the credit card, she processes all the payments based upon that, um, that charge. And she keeps it there.
So it's very controlled.
It's very controlled. And again, like, I, I don't know the number, I don't even know the type, I don't even look at it. It was under a hundred, I think it was like fifty or eighty dollars. We tried, we requested specifically to get it out of it, they said no, but.
No, this is a big improvement, so I want to thank everyone involved.
Absolutely.
Yes, this is the first reading and the next reading will be on June twelfth.
I got one question under security, number two, excuse me. Credit card activity and receipt retention. Doesn't the receipt get turned into the treasurer?
Yes.
So you bought something, you're not gonna hold the receipt, it's gotta go to the treasurer.
In practice, I've been trying to go back and forth about this. I actually did keep my receipts for myself. I gave her the receipt and the invoice. Like, in, in my cases, I could print off an actual invoice and show proof of purchase. And I gave it to her with the bill schedule and I kept it for myself and proof of, that I've received the product. Um, like, for example, I bought a, uh, I bought licenses for.
Software.
Software, thank you. So I had a receipt that I actually got the goods that I paid for and I kept it. But for her, she makes you pay it right away, so she has it.
My only suggestion is for audit purposes, actual receipts should go with the invoice. You should keep one for your own files, but the actual document in an audit would be.
With the, the paid invoice.
Where's the actual receipt, considering some things that happened in the past with.
Yes, yes, say no more. So she keeps it and I just kept a copy for myself for my own, trying to try out the process, does it work, is it working? And, um, it was, so she takes it right there. Quite often, it's a printed receipt because you're doing something that's completely online-based.
Yeah.
So the original becomes whatever's just printed off in her presence. So you have two people working. So you have two people working on it. You can't just have one.
The UMass system actually implemented, system-wide, credit cards, and they were actually given out, so if Dr. Z was head of a department, he would say who the authorized users were, and that would be how many cards your department got. So it was, it's very widespread. But, but they talked about how it saved money and how it was so efficient and...
It is. The, the Board of Health supplies are cheaper online, and that's another main reason, main push for us to have those. But we didn't want to do it without rules, so here are the rules.
So I have a question about the rules, Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, and I apologize if I'm overthinking this. My understanding of just the way that municipal finance law in the state works is that the town accountant does have the authority to refuse to pay something. So is the town accountant not playing a role in whether something is purchased on the town credit card, or does she, does that come to the town accountant's office once it's been purchased, like the receipt?
So, the town accountant, I understand, I understand. So the town accountant plays that role, whether it's on paper or not, in every purchase that you could possibly make. If you're buying, you know, a jet ski, and you use, you know, HarborMaster funds, she's going to say, "Why are you buying a jet ski? I'm not paying that," even if I got a purchase order. Even if I got a purchase order and I didn't use the credit card, she's still going to question it. So she still will question it. She acts the same in this system. I did put different things in here for the town accountant. She actually took it out. She goes, "It's not, it's not going to happen, and it's not something that should happen." And she had quite a bit of, she had quite a bit of input on this policy. Two drafts went to her.
I guess my, and maybe I'm not understanding this correctly, but I guess my concern is, can we, with the, with the credit card, can we run into a situation where, and I feel like you answered it, so I apologize if it's repetitive. Are we going to run into a situation potentially where someone has purchased something on the credit card that is needed? And then there's a dispute where a town accountant doesn't want to pay that charge that's on the credit card?
So if it's necessary, it has town administrator approval if it's over $500, and the treasurer has been the agent of buying it.
You don't...
How does the town accountant say that it's wrong?
Okay.
You have those, I mean, of course, this, there's always a possibility of that, but then...
I, I hope I'm not overthinking.
I think that you are a little bit, but the person has to know you are going to be liable for the charge if the accountant's not on board. So it behooves you to head down there and say, "Hey, I'm going to buy this." And it's actually what I did when I bought the licenses and made sure that we would be okay.
I agree with what you're describing. The only reason that she would reject it is illegal, not, not having the kind of approval that, the two steps, the two people that have to be in there, are, if by any chance the person who buys it says, "I opened the box, it's junk." It wouldn't get paid, because then you got to go through the process of, "We need another one, this is junk."
Or refund or something. Or the funds weren't there. That's another, if the funds weren't there.
If you checked, the accountant said, "You should have checked first. You don't have money in that account."
And so that would be the person's wrongdoing in that sense, but not a lot of people have used it, and it's really on a last resort kind of basis. You can only use it if a purchase order is not allowed.
Thank you.
Or not able to. Okay.
So we have another policy, first reading of a policy, it's a social, social media policy. I'm going to read the first page. Dr. Z, if you could read the next two pages, and if you could read the, the next two pages, Nancy, I appreciate it. So this is the social media policy. The background. To enhance governing in the 21st century, the Board of Selectmen developed social media accounts on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. The town utilizes social media to provide pertinent information to residents quickly and to educate the public concerned in town events, public emergencies, and other news. Doing so spurs public engagement and maintains open communication between public officials and citizens. The town of Dayton permits, permits departments to utilize social media sites and social networking sites, collectively social media sites, to further enhance communications with the residents and various stakeholders in support of town goals and objectives. Town officials and town departments have the ability to publish articles, facilitate discussions, and communicate information through social, social media to conduct official town business. Social media sites facilitate further discussion of town of government, town of Dayton government business, operations, and services by providing members of the public the opportunity to participate in many ways using the internet. Purpose. The purpose of this policy is to define authorized users of the town's social media account, develop explicit standards regarding content to be posted, and to provide political or personal ideals being communicated through an official town of Dayton account. The town has vested interests in maintaining professional, collegial, confidential, and impartial workplace. Therefore, this policy shall also set certain standards for the personal use of social media accounts by town employees. This policy sets forth general guidelines that must be adhered to with respect to utilization of social media sites for official town purposes. Questions regarding this policy shall be directed to the town administrator or designee. These guidelines may be supplemented by more specific administrative procedures and rules as may be issued. Furthermore, this policy may be amended from time to time and is meant to be read in conjunction with all other applicable policies and procedures for the town of Dayton.
Policy. A, business use. One, the town of Dayton's official website, www.dighton-ma.gov, remains the town's primary and predominant internet presence. Whenever appropriate, content posted on the town's social media sites shall also be available on the town's main website. Content posted on the town's social media sites should contain links directing users to the town's official website for additional information, forms, documents, or online services necessary to conduct business with the town. Two, official town profiles and sites must be presented in a professional and honorable manner which will not discredit the town, its mission, or employees. The town's social media sites shall clearly indicate that they are maintained by the town and shall prominently display necessary town contact information. All town's social media sites shall include the prominent placement of the official town seal if available, along with the following notification, quote, "This is the official" parentheses, "Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, et cetera, page for the town of Dayton, Massachusetts. For more information, please visit the town's official website at www.dighton-ma.gov. The purpose of the town page is to provide general public information only. Should you require a response from the town or wish to request town service, visit the website or call 508-669-6431." Three, social media accounts shall, A, serve as channels for disseminating time-sensitive information as quickly as possible; B, serve as marketing slash promotional channels for town activities, functions, and notices; and C, comply with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Ethics and Conflict of Interest laws and administrative rules and regulations of the town. Four, the approved administrators of the town's social media accounts are the town administrator, the Board of Selectmen's administrative assistant, and the members of the Board of Selectmen. Additional social media administrators and/or accounts may be approved by the Board of Selectmen or its designee. No employee shall create, maintain, or contribute to any social media site representing the town of Dayton unless authorized to do so. I just wanted to stray for a moment. We may also want to think on that number four, about whether the potential part-time personnel that we're going to hire should also have access. Five, social media accounts shall not be used for deliberation or decision-making amongst members of any board or committee that violates the open meeting law. Social media may be used for the gathering of public, input and fostering of public discussion, but under no circumstances shall social media be used outside of the confines of the open meeting law. Six, posts on the town's social media accounts shall not be of a personal or political nature and shall constitute, shall not constitute as an endorsement of any business, public figure, or any other entity that may be discussed. Seven, when a town employee responds to a comment in his or her capacity as a town employee, the employee should do so in the name of the town department, and the employee shall not share personal information about himself or herself or other town employees except as required for town business. Employees shall not disclose unauthorized confidential or sensitive information and/or materials using electronic devices or social media. B, personal use. One, employees of the town of Dayton are visible and active members of the communities where they live and work. They are inescapably identified with the town and are expected to represent it in a responsible and creditable fashion. While the town has no intention of intruding into the private lives of its employees, the town does expect employees to use professional judgment at all times with regard to personal use of social networking sites. In using social networking sites, employees should at all times be respectful to coworkers, residents, or persons seeking assistance from the town. Employees should not disclose confidential information, engage in any unlawful activity, or convey information that is disparaging or defamatory while using social networking sites, and should refrain from making comments or statements based upon race, color, gender, national origin, religion, ancestry, age, sexual orientation, or identity, disability, maternity slash paternity leave, genetics, active military status, or any other status prohibited under state or federal anti-discrimination statutes. Such statements or comments occurring online and/or through the use of social networking sites will not be tolerated. Two, employees' personal social media sites shall in no way reflect the views of the town and shall not be represented as such. Personal sites shall not appear to be official, nor shall they dispense with confidential or sensitive town information. If an employee publishes content on a personal site, profile, or page, and it has something to do with the work that employee conducts or subjects associated, or subjects associated with the town, the employee shall use a disclaimer such as, quote, "The postings on this site are my own and don't necessarily represent the town's positions or opinions," end quote. Employees shall clearly express that he or she is speaking as a resident or stakeholder and not on behalf of the town of Dayton. If an employee identifies themselves as a town employee or official, he or she shall ensure that the profile and related content is consistent with how he or she wishes to present to colleagues, residents, and other stakeholders. Three, public employees must conduct themselves knowing that they work for a public entity, and whatever they do could be reflected onto the town. Employees must be mindful that prohibited conduct on or off duty and the disciplinary offense of, quote, "conduct unbecoming," end quote, applies to social networking, blogging, and other questionable online activity. Employees assume any and all risks associated with their off-duty personal slash private blogging and use of social media on non-town-owned equipment. As a disciplinary measure imposed upon an employee found in violation of this policy, the town may request removal of the material in question. Four, employees who engage in personal or private blogging or use of social media sites may not: A, attribute personal statements, opinions, or beliefs to the town of Dayton; B, disclose confidential information; C, use the town seal or trademark; and D, post any material that, one, constitutes harassment, hate speech, or libel; two, violates the privacy rights of fellow employees; or three, is disruptive to the work environment because it impairs workplace discipline or control, interferes with job performance, or obstructs operations.
Page four, enforcement. The town of Dayton's social media sites are limited public forums. Therefore, content containing any of the following shall be prohibited on the town's social media sites. A, profane, obscene, or vulgar language or content. B, content that promotes, fosters, or perpetuates discrimination on the basis of race, creed, color, age, religion, gender, gender identity, marital status, status with regard, with regard to public assistance, national origin, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, maternity slash paternity leave, genetic information, or active military status. C, sexual content or links to sexual content. D, solicitations of commerce. E, conduct, conduct of encouragement of illegal activity. F, content that is threatening or harassing. G, information that may tend to compromise the safety or security of the public or public systems. R, H, content that violates a legal ownership interest of any other party, such as, but not limited to, a copyright. I, other information that is not public record or is otherwise privileged from public disclosure. J, the town will not tolerate employees or officials engaging in harassment, bullying, intimidation, threatening, defamation, slander, or other illegal conduct, conduct with regard to other employees, officials, or members of the public. Two, site content may be reviewed for compliance with this policy. The town reserves the right to restrict or remove any content on sites that is deemed inappropriate or in violation of the social media policy or any applicable law. However, all content will conform with the public records law. While the town can moderate social media sites that accept comments from the public, to restrict speech that is obscene, threatening, discriminatory, harassing, or off-topic, employees cannot use, excuse me, the moderation function to restrict speech with which the town merely disagrees, i.e., subject matter restrictions. Users have First Amendment rights in posting content to those rights, excuse me, users have First Amendment rights in posting content to public social media sites hosted by municipalities. Moderators and administrators must respect those rights by posting all comments other than those excluded for specific legitimate reasons as referenced herein. Three, violations of this policy either within business or personal use may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination. Violations of this policy may also result in referral of a case to the appropriate authorities for civil or criminal prosecution. Employees shall report violations of this policy to their supervisor or, in the case of department heads, directly to the town administrator. Retaliation against another employee for reporting a violation or violations of this policy is strictly prohibited by the town. Four, every employee shall be provided a copy of this policy upon adoption. Five, this policy shall be reviewed annually due to the fluid nature of social media. Compliance with state laws. All town's social media sites shall adhere to applicable state, federal, and local laws, regulations, and policies, including the public records law, public records retention schedules, copyright law, and other applicable town policies. Public records law. Relevant town records retention schedules apply to content on town's social media sites. Content posted or submitted for posting shall be retained pursuant to the public records law in its standard format and in accordance with applicable municipal records retention schedules established by the Commonwealth Secretary of State. The town or department should retain copies of social media posts, such as by printing or otherwise storing periodic snapshots of the local media content. Open meeting law. The open meeting law requires that all meetings of a public body are to be open to the public at all times unless otherwise exempted. Members elected or appointed of any town public body should refrain from using town's social media sites to discuss the business of the public body or taking action by the public body in violation of the open meeting law. Furthermore, members of the public body should refrain from commenting on or responding to inquiries related to quasi-judicial matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of their respective public bodies. Information posted by the town on its social media sites will supplement and not replace required notices and standard methods of providing warnings, postings, and notifications required to be made with regard to public meetings and hearings under Massachusetts law which otherwise, unless otherwise permitted by law. Conflict of interest. Employees are prohibited from using social media to engage in any activity that constitutes a conflict of interest for the town or any of its employees as defined by General Laws Chapter 268A. Two, all comments posted to any town's social media site are bound by the site's applicable statement of rights and responsibilities to the site provider, with the intent of the provider taking appropriate and reasonable responsive action. The town's insurance carrier may not provide for a legal defense if the employee or official is sued for conduct that is... is sued for conduct that is outside the employee's or official's official duties and tasks. Speech deemed inappropriate may be subject to individual civil liability. A copy of this policy shall be accessible from the town's official website and distributed to all town employees. Board of Selectmen reserves the right to modify or amend the above policy or to adopt such other additional policies as said board may deem necessary. This is the signature place.
Yeah, there's an addendum to this acknowledging form. This acknowledges that I have received and reviewed the social media policy with attachments of the Town of Dayton policy. By signing this form, I agree to abide by the policy and any guidelines promulgated there under, and I agree to review periodically any changes or modifications. I recognize that the law and associated policy regarding use of social media are continually evolving. Therefore, I understand that my regular review of this policy, as it may be amended, is required, and they print and sign their name and their date, and it goes into the employee's personal file. So this is the first reading of the social media policy, and our second reading will be on June 12th.
I just have one comment, and I may have missed it because, I mean, there was so much involved here. There are prohibited, you're prohibited from certain types of messages, discriminatory, inflammatory, all that bad stuff. Should we have also a clause that employees are prohibited from making public, how do I want to say this, political statements in support of candidates or things like that on a town website?
So that might restrict, so you're not allowed to do political activity on the town website, but an employee doing it on their own, like, I love Governor Weld?
But their personal page.
Their personal one, they can do that.
Okay, but this-
But on the, we are not supposed to delve into politics.
No, no, so, in going through all of this, what we have here, as I said, there is so much to digest.
Yes.
What we currently have prohibits town employees, officials, committee members, of all, anyone connected to the Town of Dayton to place a statement, defamatory or in support of, on the town's website. That's what I'm looking for.
Represented as the Town of Dayton? Correct. They cannot engage in political activity, like, as if they were speaking as the Town of Dayton.
Correct.
Can they do it on their personal page? Yes, with that state, they should put, it's a best practice.
My only concern is employees have access and signs on and says, "Vote for Joe Schmo" or "Don't vote for Joe because he's, you know, blah blah blah." So I just want to make sure any kind of political activity is prohibited by a town individual, town-connected individual on the town's site.
Posting as Town of Dayton.
Right.
They can do that, because we would be infringing on their personal rights, their civil rights, if we did that for their personal page. But they can't be posting as the Town of Dayton, like, I'm able to post as the Town of Dayton, I cannot go on there and say, "The Town of Dayton loves Bill Weld."
Correct.
I'm not allowed to do that, and neither is anybody else.
Okay, yeah, as I say, good, bad, or indifferent, I just don't want to see political statements on here because it is the town.
Totally agreed.
And that's why this-
There's something in there, though, Matt. I forget which page it was because it is a little bit lengthy. But there is something that we, maybe it was me who read, about prohibiting anything of political nature from being posted on a town's social media site.
Right, we're super neutral.
Yeah.
So this policy, I do want to thank very much and very sincerely the members of the Policy Review Board. I wrote this probably ten months ago. I know. I probably wrote this ten months ago, maybe even a year. They very much took great care in reading this and contributing their ideas, and I think we came out with a very fair and equitable product, and I thank them very much for that hard work. It was their idea to revisit it year after year, which I like, because there's so much that changes and it forces people to keep reviewing it. There's a lot of "may," "may take action," "may do this" instead of "shall's." Basically, what you can't say without recourse on the sidewalk, you can't say in a, well, that's what limited public forum is, it's basically the sidewalk.
So I guess my question, so first of all, let me take a step back. So I know that you have been working on this for quite a long time because there are a lot of issues that get raised with First Amendment rights, et cetera, et cetera, not to get in the weeds on that. So I definitely want to thank you for devising this policy in collaboration with the Policy Review Board, of course. Just a procedural question, when we talk about the Policy Review Board, which I think is a good idea, to kind of reassess this every year, if something changes, and I do understand that it is incumbent upon the employee to keep up to date with any amendments, since the members on the Policy Review Board represent the different unions, are, when something changes, are they then bringing, and again, they don't have to because it's incumbent upon the employee, but is the idea they bring that back to their rank and file?
So, yes, absolutely. And if you pass a change, so say you pass this, everyone's going to get it, they're going to sign off on it. If we made a change a year from now, everybody gets it again, everyone is understanding of what exactly the change is, and they sign off on it. While we devised this, I made sure that each of them had sent it to their respective unions. That's not to say that people responded, a lot of times they didn't, a couple of unions did, and they gave their feedback to their representative on that board and they shared it, which is the whole idea. And then, of course, it does not take away their right, they don't waive their right to fight something that might happen under this, but we like it, I like it, because it gives them the ability to weigh in on what, what might be coming down the pike, and it forges good relationships, so I value it. And so, yes, they all shared, there were two drafts that came out of that committee, both were shared, so the unions, the regular, you know, the rank and file employees, I guess, saw its progression and had the opportunity to, to provide their input, and they still do, they still can, as at this level, can say something.
Yeah, absolutely, it is a living document. Can I make one suggestion?
Of course you can.
To the beginning part where you give the name and the effective date, I think because it sounds like this is going to be a living document that I expect anyway to change year after year in some way, is there any way we could add a little section for version so that it's clear to everyone, especially our employees who we are expecting, once it's passed, to abide by this policy? Then we need to make it a little bit easier, more so than other policies maybe, to track which version we're currently, you know, operating under.
Absolutely, and we do normally write in the revisions, it's just you wouldn't see that because we don't have one that exists.
Okay, that's fine, then.
But no, I like that idea very much.
Yeah, we can just add, this is version one.
The version and the date that we adopted.
That's important.
What do we do?
Right, so say we approved this, it would have the effective date, and then next year when we made a change, it would be revisions that, you know, 2020 date, and then Board of Selectmen approval date would follow with the 2020 date as well. So I will add the version, though, because that's very important, and I'll probably add that to the second, to the signature page. So that the personnel file shows exactly what version was signed on to, so that's a great idea.
Going forward, all the policies that have been adopted so far, do you see, over a given period of time, they will each be reviewed to see if any of them needing, need updates?
I hope we constantly do that. I hope we are always looking, somebody said tonight, it was a brilliant comment about being updated and making sure that we're always on top of our game, I guess. Yes, I hope that we continually do that.
Because considering all the work that's been done, it's not stagnant, and if you don't stay on top of it, and time goes by, somebody says, "This doesn't make sense."
Right, which is what we just did, right? That's exactly what we just did. So, right, and I hope, once we're done with some of the major ones, I would like to actually bring it back to a book that is handed out when you are a new hire, you get, really, it will probably be a link, since we're moving towards this more, you know, bi-recycled movement. This is great, I have to tell you, this is great and I love it, and I feel very contained and that I'm not taking everybody's space up, Karen. So I love this, but we'll send out a link and post it, and as it stands now, they're all available on our website, even in draft form, when we have something to you, we post it on the website so that people following along can have access to it.
I love the fact that Brett has this, it gives me more space as Brett might.
I will say this.
Thank you for reading that.
There were some complaints, Ed, don't take this personally, there were some complaints about having to wait for the chairman of the Finance Committee to move through his data, whereas if he'd had the sheet in front of him, he could have just picked it up. I says, "I'm not even getting into that."
But it added for them, too, so, if they would be able to put the number in.
But the people waiting for the data expected instant, they don't want adding, they don't want, you know, just tell us, whatever.
Agreed, but even if he had documents, I mean, we spent innumerable amounts of time flipping through papers.
Can I just ask a question?
Of course.
Hi, it's mentioned, I know this is not going to be the first time, but it's the last time that it's read, but can we have a lot of clarity around what a town employee is, because I think, does that include these volunteer committees? I think we need to really be clear because-
If you're affiliated with the town in any way, paid or unpaid, paid or unpaid, you are an agent of the town in some capacity, and you're held to this.
So even, that's actually a really good question, so if I am, as an elected official, I am-
You're beholden to this.
Operating under this policy, okay.
But if you're a volunteer, and you take that oath of office to serve on that committee or to do whatever that is, the minute you do it, you're obligated.
And, you know, you can't fire a volunteer, but you can remove them, and this makes them unnoticed, there's a standard here in the Town of Dayton.
I think it's really important, and I'm really glad you asked that question, and you've seen this as someone who helps administer that Town of Dayton Facebook page, we have had, and I'm not going to get into names, but we have had elected officials who have posted incredibly inappropriate things on that page, so I'm really glad that we are thinking about adopting this in a couple of weeks.
So, once this is approved, will all the board members then, and all the employees will get a copy of this, and they need to sign it?
Right, it is very much similar to the anti-harassment policy, which basically is part and parcel with this policy, because you can use social media as a harassment tool.
Correct.
And you would then be, so if you did that bad thing, you're under both of those, and then charges sort of rack up if you really are egregious.
So, what, is it a three strikes and you're out? Is it a one strike and you're out? Do you all, would you all, would the Board of Selectmen, this would come before them, they would vote to decide what to do with that person, as they did?
So the severity of the, this is where the union gets involved, right? So the severity of the event certainly comes into play, the frequency with how often you may have been doing this, you know, if it's like one thing and you maybe post your, "Oh, I love Donald Trump," or something like that, on the Facebook page for the Town of Dayton, and you're like, "Oh, my gosh, I thought I was posting as myself, I'm sorry, and we investigated, and it's a simple mistake," we're not going to come down hard, right? But if you hijack the Town of Dayton's media pages because you're a disgruntled employee or anybody, yes, we would probably talk about immediate dismissal, administrative leave at least until you are investigated, and then it would become before the board. I don't have hiring and firing power, so it would be here anyway, but I generally-
Should we consider, at least as a minimum, somebody posts something inappropriate? Until you have a chance to investigate it, immediately suspend their access to that, so they can't post anything else, you look into it, and if you find out it was just a slip, then you say, "Okay," but you have an opportunity to say, "Okay, we investigated, and we understand, you thought you were posting something." My concern is that if it's, somebody's going to monitor this.
Right.
Or if a person calls in and say, "Hey, I'm reading the town's website, it says this."
Right.
If you immediately suspend access for that individual, number one, they aren't going to post again until you have a chance to look into it and say to them, "How did this happen?" And if you're satisfied with how it happened, then they have access again, but-
So, item four under, that's a very good point, and we certainly can add that in there, but item four under, it's not as strong as saying, "Hey, you're going to be removed while we investigate this."
That's why I said suspend.
A, business use, item four, says that no employee shall create, maintain, or contribute to any media, social media site representing the town unless authorized to do so, so you'd revoke that authorization, but it's certainly not as strong as putting it out there that if you do something wrong, we're going to have a problem with that.
So I don't want to belabor the point, I know you want to move on, Mr. Chairman, but I do also just want to ask, and maybe this is covered in the policy, and I apologize if I don't, if I didn't grasp it the first time.
It's fine, it's long.
Where, is there a line drawn for a, just a resident, not, is not a volunteer, is not appointed, is not elected to anything? What if, because I've seen this on the page in the past, where a resident who's not affiliated with the town will post something that probably is not appropriate, so I know we can't fire that person, obviously, I get that, but are we removing, saving and removing that content?
Have to save it, because that's a public record.
Correct.
And you have to have a reason to remove it that is very strong and very clear. So if they are posting something completely obscene, we know what that is, yes, you take it down immediately. However, if you're maybe questioning it, that's a call for counsel, and they would, you know, advise us, but you have, you would be subject to infringing upon their right to tell their political leaders how they feel about something. I mean, I'm assuming the post would be specific to an incident.
What if they are endorsing, what if they are performing political activity on a non-political town social media?
As their own person posting onto the Town of Dayton's wall, or, actually, it's not called a wall anymore, but, yeah.
It's just called page or something.
Dating myself. So if they, if they posted that, you would have, it would be specific to whatever the post is, and then you'd have to make the decision. If it's obscene, like outright horrible, you'd remove it, but keep a copy of it for public records, because you know that will come up. But if it's something that is maybe dancing on, "I just don't agree with you," you have to be very, very careful about what you remove, very careful.
Could it be possible, well, first of all, I'm surprised, because I thought town-connected people would have to have some kind of clearance to access the site. So if anyone can respond, is it better to have some other method of somebody submitting a question and getting a response as opposed to, all they have to do is access it once, that's what scares me, and if it's horrendous.
Right, well, that's what, we did have some recently horrendous ones, we did. We left them on there, we didn't respond. That's why you put that little disclaimer there that says, "If you want to get in touch with us, the right way to do it is through our website, or you call." This is kind of a public service, and we realize that the members of the public utilize social media, and we want to be there to give you information, but this is not-
I don't have a problem with the town giving out information.
No, I know what you're saying. We, you, if somebody said something terrible and posted it as a normal, like a regular person, and stuck it on our page, number one, we actually, you don't see that right away as a town post. If it's a comment, that's a different story, but you don't have to respond to it, and quite often, that's a signal that, you know, we're not going to engage in that kind of discussion.
Is there a delay mechanism, that if somebody posts something, somebody can scan, what do we got for questions and things? It's not?
No, it's instantaneous.
Can anybody post?
It can be reported, we likely would, if somebody posted something obscene, we'd likely report them, and we'd remove it, but keep a copy so that we could show what we did and what, why, and there would be no question.
Could anybody post an obscene picture?
Yes, I mean, so, hold on, but what Selectmen Goulart is getting at is the fact that the town, like, something comes into the social media site, it doesn't require our approval, it's just there.
It's there, yeah.
I think that's what she's getting at.
We can set that, though.
I didn't realize that was-
You can put a setting.
It's open, that people could post.
Well, they can comment, they can't post, that's, but they can-
No, they can post, but it doesn't, all right, so, yes, they can comment, and that's in your face, and that's real time, and if you don't catch it in time, it's going to be there. If they post, it goes into this, like, back area thing that is not up front, that is not in your face, and you might not see it. We all get a notification that somebody has posted, so that we can see it, usually, like lately, it's like, "Oh, this dog is lost, you know, please call," whatever, and they're trying to get the word out. But you can set it that they have to be reviewed before they show up.
That's what I'm looking for, the five-second delay that they have on-
But that's only on a post, not a comment.
Correct.
So, they can put a picture on a comment, I, we can put in the, it's a valid point, we can put in the review period, which I think is actually there, but you can put in the review period for a post. If it's a comment, we would have to be, but I think that we would generally find out about it relatively quickly.
You can also, and again, not to belabor the point, but you can also kind of set up the page where we enter certain words in the settings, and then if someone posts, makes a post to the town's social media site that contains any of those words, it won't allow it to be posted. So there are ways-
The Facebook, I like that, the Facebook police.
And just, because I know, I know you're, you have a page, but you're not on, when we say comment, we mean when the town posts something, someone can comment, and that's real time, that's, we can't control that, we might, once we see it, yeah, we-
We can turn them off, there are occasions where I've used that previously, not here, but because I knew it was going to develop into something that should not be, so you can shut the comments off.
I think that's on a page, but we're getting to the- I think that's on a page, but we're getting to the weeds.
Yeah, we are.
I just have one other thing I need to clarify. And I don't want to know what it said. I'm not looking for specifics. At our last meeting, we dealt with a very difficult issue. People out there had said to me after, they said, you know, good job at the meeting and we support you, so forth and so on, in that particular issue. But there were others that said, there were some nasty things said. Was it posted on the town site? Is that what they were talking about? I didn't see them and I don't want to know what it said.
There were a couple of comments made on the Town of Dayton's page. Not, we had a post that didn't relate to that at all. And there were, I got a personal Facebook message from somebody in Columbia. So, I don't know. I ignored it. There was a lot of misinformation and that person was significantly misinformed. And I left it on there because it's not, it wasn't obscene. It's not inappropriate. It's not, there's no reason to take it out.
All right, okay.
So it was just wrong.
Yeah, okay.
But yes, right.
My response was, I rarely go to the town website because I get all my information through emails and, you know, because I'm around. But I just wondered if, now that I heard you talking about this, is that what they said?
It didn't seem to be a town resident, in my opinion.
No, no, it definitely was not.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to ask one more question, not to draw myself, but one on here. I guess I'm a little confused too, as I know if you are an elected official or an appointed official, and you have your personal page. And I would just say that this has happened to me directly just as a resident with an elected official on a different Board, who has taken personal attacks and been very defaming. How do you manage that if I brought it to the attention, just as a resident?
Right.
And is that, will that work and how does that work? Because it's not posted on the Town of Dayton website. But if you have, I'll just throw my husband on the bus right now and say, he's, he's an appointed official. If he wanted to use his personal Facebook page to be great, something that was going on in town, and attack or harass a person by name, what, like, that's what, I guess I need clarity around, like, because he has the right to say what he wants, but he is also a representative of this town.
So if he kicks it up to a level that doesn't meet a professional standard, this is as clear as I think I can say it. If he kicks it up to a level that is not a professional standard of conduct, the policy kicks in. And depending on the severity of this offense. Now, if it's an elected official, it's a little bit trickier. But if you're going to be a part of the Town of Dayton, you're going to be a part of that standard as well and kind of come into those rules. You know, you have to know that there's a line and social media is included in what that line is.
So, Madam Administrator, you said policy. Do you mean policies? Because what I also see is potentially something that could happen is where we have something that's extremely derogatory. And not only has that employee, if you will, violated the social media policy, but now they've also kind of borderlines, like triggering the anti-harassment policy.
Right. So this is a fake employee. This is a fake employee, not really happening.
Correct.
So yes, I had indicated that. And there's one line in there that says that you may be subject to any and all applicable policies and laws.
Yes.
So there might be a case where somebody is so egregious that they commit, you know, hate crimes or, exactly. So hate speech, that's a, that's a real thing. That's an offense that you get in trouble for. So there's all sorts of other underlying and overlying areas where you could fall into a pitfall. So the point is, be respectful, make your point, but understand it's all neighbors.
But we also, as Board members, when it comes to reappointing people to Boards, and I think we're going to be doing that shortly. If we've seen something that we felt was offensive harassing somebody, I don't see how we're obligated to reappoint that person.
So you do have to worry about retaliation, but nobody needs to be reappointed just by right.
Well, there is no right.
Right. You fill the term, the term is up, and then, you know, you don't have to do it.
A comment that I find offensive, I don't think I have to support that person.
I just want to caution you very much on retaliation. It is not hard to prove.
I don't feel like that.
No, I know. I just feel that I need to tell you about it because retaliation is something that's quote unquote, easy to prove. It's not a high bar legally, so.
I get that. But here's, here's what I think to your point, Chairman Pacheco, and Selectmen Goulart as well. I don't take things personally like that, so I don't feel like it's being retaliatory. But what I will say is, if I'm over here getting criticized and I can take it in stride and be a professional and be understanding that that comes with the territory of being a public servant, then I'm going to expect that other elected officials, to Mrs. Quinn's point, and other appointed officials are going to hold themselves to that same standard as well. And I think it's not retaliatory. It's just to say, you're not living up to the standard that everybody else who is appointed and elected live up to. It is a privilege to be an appointed official. To your point, in my, in my personal viewpoint, is it's a privilege. It's not the right, as you stated.
It's also a privilege to be allowed to access the town's website. That's why my concern was, somebody can, well, we already covered that.
This has the most teeth for people using the Town of Dayton brand, name, I guess, in a nefarious way. I'm just, I just want you to be aware of retaliation. I feel like it's my job to make sure that you know.
Of course, to advise us. No, but I'm just saying.
I'm not trying to make a point one way or the other. And as long as you're going and holding everybody to the standard, you don't, you don't dim into the.
That's how we're talking about personal attacks. I'm talking about seeing something that's offensive to maybe residents in town and stuff like that. I think it's, it's appropriate for us. I'll speak for myself to not feel that that person needs to be reappointed.
Right.
I agree.
I'm glad you mentioned use of the town seal and the prohibitions because people don't realize the only person that can authorize use of that seal is the town clerk, and that's by law.
Absolutely.
And I know that there was a, I'll call it a slip-up. Somebody printed, I don't know if it was T-shirts or whatever, and it had the town seal. It was like, oh, that's a no-no. I mean, we even specifically get permission for the bags and our stormwater stuff.
And just so you are aware, Selectmen Goulart, the only social media site that has the town seal that I know of is the Town of Dayton's, which when, back in 2017, I worked on that with the town clerk.
Right, yeah. Some people just think, oh, hey, let's put the seal on. It's going to look great. And it's like, we had that discussion with bags and I says, you can't do that. And we need permission from the town clerk, you know?
That's right. The same. I think a while ago, like a long time ago, somebody mentioned donating a town flag because we don't have that many. And that's a great idea, but they need permission. And I think their heart's in the right place, but you know, there are some procedures. And it is little known. So you're right to.
And this one just can't duplicate it. Just, let's run off of, weave a whole bunch of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for your feedback, though.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I thank you for finally incorporating this policy. Thank you, the Policy Review Board, and you for putting this together because we need this in the town.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinn.
Have a good night, Karen.
You too.
Thank you.
So next item is a request by Police Chief to buy back vacation time. To Board of Selectmen, I am respectfully submitting a request to buy back 10 days vacation time as stated in my contract. I would also like to request to buy back four additional vacation days if possible.
So he has actually already received that 10-day, the 10 days. So there's four additional that he's looking. He's also already carried over 10 days.
He received it or he used it?
Received it. So by right, well, he's put in for it. By right, he's allowed by his contract. The four additional is basically an exception. I just have to say, we are dealing with a significant amount of vacation going on right now and it concerns me. Not, this has nothing to do with Chief McDonald, but just overall, there's quite a few people not utilizing their vacation time.
Oh, the carryover problem.
And the carryover and the buyback. I mean, yes, I agree. I myself had trouble, quote unquote, trouble using it. And I'm trying to do everything I can to get everything, get it. But there's a lot here. And I just want people to know, please don't feel tied to your desk. Use it throughout the year so that we aren't constantly carrying over. Because what happens is you're just compounded in the fiscal year, the next one, because you've added two weeks, in most cases, to your vacation time. So it's really something that we should be aware of and monitoring. And it's something I plan to address in the next year, some solutions.
And it's really supposed to be extenuating circumstances that prevented you from taking your time.
Right.
It should be a practice.
Exactly. Like if you were hired in February and you had, you don't have the time to use it. So, I agree.
Yeah, I'm just wondering with this particular request for the four additional days, because of the new police station, all the work that was involved and that maybe he wasn't able to take some time that he ordinarily would have been able to. I'm not talking about the 10 days. I'm talking about the four additional vacation days.
Well, he also had a medical situation that couldn't use it.
Right.
Are you entertaining motion, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Police Chief to buy back four additional vacation days.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
This next one actually is due to extenuating circumstances. It is quote unquote frowned upon for the SRO to utilize vacation time during the school year, which makes sense. So he's doing his best to utilize some up, but he does have some extenuating circumstances.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request from Patrolman Todd Kuzuski to carry over 80 hours or 10 days of accrued vacation time from fiscal year 2019 to fiscal year 2020.
Second.
He's act, I'm sorry.
Isn't he asking for 28?
108. It's 108 total hours.
Yes, you have to add those too.
So the 80 hours is kind of in contract and by right. And that can be approved by the Police Chief, which I believe it was. But the 28 hours is what you're here voting on.
Okay. Did you, can you rescind your second, Selectmen Goulart?
Yep. I withdraw the second.
And I withdraw my motion. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request by Patrolman Todd Kuzuski to carry over an additional 28 hours of vacation into fiscal year 2020.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Is this the end of a moment? Are we going to anticipate more requests?
This is the last one because you have to be in by June 1st. You see how close everybody cut it. And everybody's contract's a little bit different because of course it is. But this is, this should be the last one. There's another request to do something similar, but it didn't come in in time for this meeting. And it's, it's a special thing like we did for the three patrolmen last meeting. And I have a recommendation on it. You'll see that next week. But this is the last request of this sort, yes. Long answer.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it. The next one, Adam?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, if you're entertaining motions, of course, to approve the carryover request of 32 hours of vacation time for Communications Dispatcher Adam Foss into fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Sorry, that's the one I meant was the last one. I was talking about Adams.
I move right along. Correspondents? We have received, Town of Michigan received a correspondence from Eversource. They have announced the residential basic service rate for July 1st through December 31st, 2019, period of point, it's 10 cents, what we're talking about.
Point 10836. So almost 11, yeah.
And the current rate that we, those that are in the aggregation is point 10430 per kilowatt. It's my understanding, this is just a notice on this, an announcement, we don't have to take any action.
Correct. That's right. And there, I wanted this to be on there specifically because many residents have received those opt-in cards. There were some questions. And I just wanted to, not opt-in cards, but the cards about it. And I wanted them to know it's a legitimate thing if you get it from the municipal community aggregation.
So this is a temporary rate increase under the contract?
No. This, they're telling you that it's a savings essentially to be in the aggregation group. It's a savings by point 00406 cents.
So our aggregation's still there?
It's better, yeah.
Still cheaper than the.
Right. And if you remember, this is the, this is the group that, like, we went to litigation and we got it to this thing and it was still less than the second bidder.
Okay, all right.
We're doing well. It's a good deal.
Announcements. The Affordable Housing Lottery Opportunity at Knights Landing in Swansea, Mass. I believe this is right across the street from Luther Museum, if you're familiar with Swansea. If you're interested in applying for one of these affordable units, you can call 617-782-2300, extension 209. And the second.
Can I just ask you, so the Luther Museum is that old, old home that's on, is it Old Warren Road? That runs parallel to Route, it's between 103 and Route 6?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
The second announcement is for the Strawberry Festival put on by the Dayton Historical Society. I want to point out that I am an officer and a member of the Dayton Historical Society. It's a nonprofit group. None of the officers, none of the people get paid, so it's a completely volunteer. Volunteer, we volunteer our time for this. So the Third Annual Dayton Strawberry Festival is on June 22nd, 2019, from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m. Please join us in celebration of the Dayton strawberry tradition. This is hosted by Under the Sun. They're at 1050 William Street, North Dayton, Mass. We're going to have strawberry shortcakes, local vendors, live music, you pick strawberries, hayrides, balloon twister, farm animals, pony rides, and more. There will be 35 different vendors there. This program is sponsored in part by a grant from the Dayton Cultural Council, a local agency which is partially supported by the Massachusetts Cultural Council Estate Agency. I can tell you that last year we sold out strawberry shortcakes. I, as well as all the other members of the Dayton Historical Society, did not have an opportunity to have a shortcake, but we have more this time. So please participate.
How much is the shortcake?
Four dollars.
You know, we went to the one in Freetown because that was, that was before yours. We couldn't get near the place.
Is that right? And I believe we hope it just happens, pass. Our Selectmen reports. Are there any Selectmen reports?
Yeah, I got, the Stormwater Committee met today and we just reviewed the training that I've been going to for the Stormwater Management Plan and the illicit discharge detection program. Going to be working all that, put that all together. We are going to be required to have a training event for all town employees. It's not, it's not difficult. It's not, but anyhow, they encourage all town employees to be aware of the program and what they can do to help. At the Stormwater meeting, when Mrs. Ehrenstein was there, one of the things we talked about and was agreed on, she's going to be working with a couple of committee members, is to come up with finding a reliable service for mapping, not only the GIS mapping and all that. One of the requirements we've got going down the road is that we must have accurate mapping of all storm drains, culverts, outflows, arrows showing the directions of flows. I mean, it's like very complicated. They showed us a sample at the meeting and it's like, whoa, but.
When would that be due or is that?
Those, these plans we're working on actually went out 10 years. And I'm sitting there thinking. We're just focusing on getting the basic stuff that we need this year. But it goes on, and it all goes back to the NOI and when we said we could, the notice of intent, when we said we could do it. Those were two different sessions. I did meet Fred Sivian, who is the DEP person, talked about this. And it was grant money from DEP that allowed us to have these workshops. The other thing I want to mention is when I left Middleborough yesterday, I went to the UMass Dartmouth School of Law. They had a program called Perspectives on K-12 Public Education Funding and Reform. They, they had superintendents there from New Bedford and Fall River Gateway Cities. They also had somebody from Somerset, Berkeley, obviously a suburban regional school district. The president of the Fall Rivers Teachers Association and a couple of other people that are generally involved with education funding. Pat Hadad was the MC, I'll call it for it. A lot of what they're talking about as far as reforms and improvements and money and all that is not going to help Dayton or Rehoboth. Couple of interesting things were that, as of yesterday, the city of Fall River, now like the city of New Bedford has been for a while, has become, how do I say this, a majority-minority city as far as residents go. And one of the things they pointed out, Massachusetts, of course, is leader across the country with educational scores and testing and all that. However, because there are so many underprivileged children in gateway cities, in Gateway Cities, the averages are gonna drop, because what you're looking at now is reflective of everything across the state, but because of the number of needy children and services and needs not being met, those scores are gonna decrease, because of that population of children continues to increase. They're trying to get full-day pre-K class in instruction, because of the value of it, but also, you gotta get the kids early to help them, so, um, these were all of, some of the interesting things that came out, but, um, as I said, it's not a financial boom for us, uh, and all of the stormwater stuff we're working on, it's a lot of work, so we're just gonna keep going with it.
Thank you. Any other, uh, Selectmen's reports?
Nope.
Actually, I had you bring in that big check that we got the town government to green.
Oh, that's, she's got it next time.
No, we don't have to, go get it, but, uh.
We, we attended two graduations and the Memorial Day Parade.
Acknowledgements. We received an anonymous donation, a prime time received an amount of twenty dollars.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the anonymous donation, the prime time, in the amount of twenty dollars.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. Asking for a motion to accept for review the minutes of March twentieth, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, are we gonna read all these vacancies, just so people know?
Oh, I did.
And we gotta add.
Yes, you mind doing it, then, I just, I skipped it, I'm sorry. You want me to read it?
No, if you, go ahead.
Yeah, there were vacancies on the following boards, the Trails Committee, Zoning Board of Appeals, the Governance Committee, we're in the process of forming that committee, so we really don't have any vacancies since we.
Or on the Zoning Board of Appeals, we just, we just filled it.
That was the last position that needed to be filled, I guess.
I just, yes, uh, the another.
So, I'll take that back, not the ZBA, nor the Governance Committee, the Soil Conservation Commission, Land Use Committee, the Bylaw Committee, CPC, you're looking for, at-large member in the Open Space Committee.
And the Finance Committee.
And the Finance.
That's right.
If I can plug the Bylaw Committee, um, based upon the town meeting vote, on Monday, we have a couple of bylaws that need review, so now is a great time.
Anyone interested in the Finance Committee should send, uh, uh, something in writing to, uh, Mr. Swartz, because they, they will make the appointment.
Eight minutes, we already did that, approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved, forty-eight A dash nineteen, in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred sixty-two dollars, forty-five cents payroll. Forty-eight B dash nineteen, in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars, seventy-six cents payroll. Forty-eight C dash nineteen, in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred fifty-four dollars, fifty-three cents. And forty-eight D dash nineteen, in the amount of one million, two hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred twenty-eight dollars, eighty-eight cents. That last one being Dayton-Rehoboth, and those two being accounts payable, will be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, the ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that warrant, oh, and those warrants were dated May twenty-ninth. Uh, I move that warrant number forty-nine A nineteen, in the amount of a hundred one thousand, six hundred forty-three dollars, thirty-eight cents payroll. Forty-nine B dash nineteen, in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, one fifty-seven point seventy-nine. And forty-nine C dash nineteen, in the amount of twenty-five thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars, ten cents. The last two being accounts payable, all dated June fifth, be approved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, the ayes have it. Public input, there's no public here?
Just one comment, public, the town reports are out, and if you weren't at the town meeting, we have the, uh, town reports available, and there's a nice picture on the cover of the new police station communication center that was taken and submitted by Sergeant Cronin. So stop by and pick up your town reports.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Before we do that, just announce that our next meeting is June twelfth, we're meeting at six o'clock for executive session, opening the meeting at six, and we'll, I'll have the public hearing at six thirty on June twelfth. Any, any discussion on the adjournment?
Any public hearing? What public?
I mean, a regular hearing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Just a meeting.
Yes.
Just a meeting.
So the, so the meeting starts at six P.M.
Executive.
For you.
Yes.
Yes.
But we open up the meeting.
Okay.
Correct?
Alright, thank you.
Looks like we're gone.
Don't know.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.